Because somebody said that they were, that they have a summer membership.
This will be the.
And I was thinking, summer membership.
And they do a summer full membership and a summer social.
All right, so it's two o'clock. Hi Bob. Let's go ahead and get a pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a reminder for the workshop, there will be no homeowner's comment. Homeowner's comments will be taken at three o'clock at the regular scheduled meeting. And we are ready for discussion on the final, discussion on the 2024 budget. So we want to go ahead and start with capital, so start page forty, is that what the plan is? Okay.
You're in charge, you're somewhere, I'm just driving.
We don't have a hard copy of the latest one?
It's in your boardroom.
It's electronic, right?
No, it's, yeah.
It's the same thing that's printed out.
You want an actual one?
Says version two, June fifteenth, twenty-three.
That's what we're looking at.
Oh, we don't have a version, you know, I thought we had version three.
Nope.
No.
It would have come out of today to make any changes.
Excuse me, okay. Okay, all right.
Now, you've got to have version two, June fifteenth, not June fourteenth.
I have version two, June fifteenth.
That's the correct one.
That's a good one.
That's the one that you guys approved, June fifteenth. So that's the most recent iteration of the budget.
So where did you want to start?
Uh, page forty. I think that's what we wanted to focus on today, right, Capito?
Forty? No. Maybe fifty-two?
Uh, it's.
You want to do these charts?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hey, it's Chelsea. So I, I would suggest that you guys perhaps first start with discussing if you're going to fully fund the capital improvement plan, fifty percent because more, or twenty-five percent, whatever that, whatever you guys determine, because from that point, we can either cut back if we need to or reprioritize projects.
Laura, can we turn her up?
Yes.
Yeah. Chelsea, question, the 1.2 million that's in the capital reserve study for the general fund, the 1.2 million recommended, what is it based on? Is it based on this document here? Or is it based on a parallel document that's got more detail?
So that, their reserve study was based on the assets that we had given them at the time. The, the one that you see and that you've adopted as part of the setting high watermark, that is the more detailed refined that staff went in and assessed every single asset valued twenty-five hundred dollars or more.
Okay, if we take this one then, put it in their format with a cash flow analysis over twenty, twenty-five years, where they came up with 1.2 million for their version, what is the number you come up with that we need to put in in twenty twenty-four to know that of which we're going to take a hundred percent, seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five, ten or zero? What, what is your equivalent number? Is it the same 1.2 million to keep it in black ink?
I believe it was close, it's, it's obviously front end loaded because of, you know, the kicking the can down the road and we want to jump on some of these projects sooner than later. Laura, didn't you, I think you crunched those numbers and we came up with, you know, what an average cost would be if we just broke it out over the thirty years, right? Yeah, you have it.
Okay, and page twelve of the report into general fund, we have reserve capital program two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, that was what we did in twenty-three. We've got it shown in twenty-four. What percentage, what percentage of the capital necessary is that number? In other words, if I've, I've got this capital budget, all of these, these items, and if the other, the firm had projected that it took 1.2 million to.
What, which page are you on? Just so I can pull it up.
What do you want?
I'm gonna have to call you back, Jennifer. It's ringing in my ear.
This is forty-one.
My issue is, is that I want to make sure we're on the same page of what we're dealing with. If the capital reserve study suggested 1.2 million to fund the projects that they had, and let's just take for example, that our list of projects is somewhat similar to theirs, then I would say that it probably would take on the same argument, the same 1.2 million. And if that's the case, and we're only budgeting two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, we're right now approved a budget at a high watermark at twenty-five percent, if my math is right. So why are we even talking about it? Sounds like we haven't got anything to cut. We're at a percentage that I, I guess we've already deemed the high watermark is twenty-five percent, if my math is right.
Okay, so on page twelve.
Which page twelve? Because everything has two numbers on it.
Page twelve of the general fund.
Is it page twelve of the budget or page twelve of the agenda packet? There's two page numbers on the bottom of everything.
The budget, the budget, the one we approved. It shows that we approved a dollar amount that had inclusive in it reserves capital program two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. That, by my calculations.
This page?
Is twenty-five percent.
Yeah, me either.
Go to the general fund, oh oh one, the end of it.
Oh, capital program. Oh, here.
Well, how can they be different?
But understand that the oh oh one is different, that's, the, the capital fund is actually three hundred and three oh one.
Hold on, let me get him square away here. Why is his different mind, why is his budget different than mine?
It's on agenda, page sixteen, budget page twelve.
Bob might have the, has the old version.
No, he has version two.
You've got the old version, you've got the fourteen.
No, the fifteen.
That's where I started, Rob, when I thought you said the fourteen.
Do you have it with you?
No, I don't.
Here, have mine, I have an actual.
I can print it out.
Okay, going back, I, I just want to clarify this because I, it seems to me that we may be making a mountain out of a molehill. How much money do we have in the budget approved? Asking a stupid question because I thought I knew the answer, and I obviously don't. How much money do we have in this approved budget, high watermark budget? Do we have allocated toward the general topic capital reserves? That could be inclusive of repair and maintenance and capital, it's two different terminologies, but they are essentially the same thing.
Well, it looks like two seventy-nine.
I thought at the end of the meeting last time when we were talking about the budget, we asked that question. And Laura, you told us that scattered throughout this budget, there's basically 1.2 million-ish in, if we take all the reserves from all the funds that we have.
No, this is just oh oh one, this is just the oh oh one fund we're talking about. The oh oh one fund in the capital reserve study that we had paid for suggested that for twenty twenty-four, we increased the two seventy-nine in twenty twenty-three to 1.2 million. We knew that, we were described as that, as being a one hundred percent figure.
Okay, so first there's two, the capital, the workbook that we are looking at, that one, the, the big long spreadsheet with all of the projects on it that was spread out over ten years?
Yes, yep.
That is not included, no, the one that we came up with. So that, that is not in the oh oh one fund, which is what you're looking at. We have a separate, we have separate funds for the enterprise fund and for the general fund, just for capital projects. So that would actually be on page, uh, agenda packet, page forty-four, budget page forty, is where the first one is, the three hundred is capital projects for the general fund.
My, my question is real simple.
Okay, I have, actually, I have this.
What is the total amount of money to meet a hundred percent of the capital reserve to what we start with? What is that number? Is it the 1.2 million that was recommended by the other firm or is it a smaller number or is it a larger number? Where did we come up with the equivalent of their 1.2 million? That's what I'm trying to figure out. This is where we take and identify all the capital items, we scatter them over ten, fifteen years, whatever, and then we do a cash flow analysis to determine how much money we need to put in every year to avoid red ink. That's the magic number I want. That's, that's telling me that we have prepared a capital reserve budget that is one hundred percent funded.
So that's the capital improvement plan, general fund? That's the one you're talking about?
I, I don't know, I'm still having troubles with that because it doesn't go far enough out.
Yeah, yes.
We can use that.
The three hundred is the, all of the projects, and we had originally, if you guys recall, we had originally divided the total replacement over the life of it, and you guys said, no, you don't want to do that, let's just do it and, and expend it that year. So we went back and that's how we ended up getting this number, which our number for CIP is what, 1.3, Laura, for this, for next year?
What are you looking at, Chelsea?
Uh, what you guys have on the screen.
You're looking at page forty-seven? No, that's not it.
What's the total of the three hundred?
Seven point four.
Where are you seeing that?
Uh, it's on the screen, it is on budget page forty-one.
But what is, what, that, what is that less the bond proceeds?
Uh, 1.3 million of that is bonds.
So we've, we've, at, at a hundred percent replacing of, and funding of your CIP, we're at 1.3 million, which is a hundred thousand over the reserved amount, and you're socking away two point, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand for, for future CIP to, to fund, to start to fund that, so it's not such a big hit.
Do you understand that?
No, I did not.
I didn't understand that at all.
Are you looking at the line that says excess of revenues over under expenditures for version two fiscal year twenty twenty-four, one million, three hundred and thirty thousand, four six, four hundred and sixty dollars? Is that what you're referring to, Chelsea?
Yes.
So that's the amount above what we have allocated today for bond?
I thought it was only a hundred thousand dollars more.
That's what I was thinking. I'm just trying to figure out, going the other way, working forward instead of backwards, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars is what percentage of X that we need to bring in to have a fully funded one hundred percent capital reserve? This tells me it's not very much money if it's only two seventy-nine.
Two seventy-nine over how many years is what you're saying?
One year.
That's just, that's just next year.
Yeah.
The capital reserve study that we had performed was 1.2 billion every year for the next, about next five or six years. That's what's got me really, really bothered.
Is the two seventy-nine a quarter of it? Or is it a hundred percent of it?
Correct.
I, I understand your question.
And if it's a hundred percent of it, it's, it's a hundred percent of a very small number, and our capital is way more than that. If that, that's two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, take that for five years, you've just got 1.2 million dollars, and we're talking about seven million right now.
Laura, do you understand what, what Ed is trying to back into? Like, we're just want to make sure we understand the problem that we're trying to solve.
Mm-hmm, but I understand those are two separate funds, so you're, you're crossing.
Well, I don't care if they're.
Crossing things, so that's why the.
I don't have any problem with that.
The money that we're setting aside for the capital projects would show, that, all of that stuff is in the three hundred budget, it would not show anywhere in the oh oh one fund.
Okay, the stuff that's in the bond, how much of that is in the capital that created the 1.2 million that our consultant prepared? Maybe we can get that one.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking for the delta between what's in the bond and what was.
What's in the capital.
Yes, yes, that's a better way of saying it.
The one, Laura, the 1.3 is, is the, the, everything else that the bond does not cover.
That's the cap, correct, yeah, 1.3 million is what we need to cover, that's for cash.
And that's to be completed next fiscal year?
That's for fiscal twenty-four, yes.
Okay, one million, three thirty, four hundred and sixty thousand, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Where is that on the general fund?
It would, it would, you keep crossing, it will not show on the general fund. It won't show in the oh oh one.
Where's the money coming from to pay for it? To know what account it is?
This, these numbers get factored in to the capital expenses, so.
Okay, but that, that's my, dodging my question. Where is it at in the operating? We've got to generate our rates and charges to the people, the assessment comes from this calculation.
Yep.
Where in this calculation do you generate 1.33 million? Where is it, where is it, or what, what items added make 1.33 million? I'm, I'm just trying to take and say, and be satisfied that we're covered, because right now I don't see what we're covering.
I'm doing the math here, I think it's all the highlighted items on the capital improvement plan and the general fund, they are darker, I didn't put it in color.
Doesn't it have to be on page twelve? Page twelve is the only one that has other fees and charges, where else would it be?
It would be a transfer in, and it would be a transfer into the three hundred.
So we're not going to see it under the one hundred on page twelve, the summary for oh oh one?
Laura, you'll have to confirm that with Steven, but I'm pretty sure it's a transfer in from.
If it's not in here on this page, it's not in the budget.
I'm typing an email right now.
I mean, because that's our total amount of money that we're bringing in, that the, Steven did the calculations on, at eight hundred and fifty-one dollars or whatever it was.
Yeah, so even if the, even if the three hundred is a sub GL, it still falls under the oh oh one, is what you're saying, Ed? Correct?
If it's a capital, yeah.
Three hundred, if it's a sub GL, it still would.
It's a, it's a separate fund.
But how do you generate cash for it then? To pay for it? Where's it coming from?
It would come out, it would come out of the, it would come out of the non-advalorem assessments and it would be a transfer to the capital improvement fund.
Now, now we're getting there. Where, which fund, okay, which, which fund on pages nine, ten, eleven or twelve are you transferring that 1.3 million to make it happen?
Laura, can you go to the top of the, this?
Do what? On the screen. Yeah, you on, you on, you on page, starts on page, what, nine? No.
Bonds are six million of it.
Okay, so, so go, so now go to, go to the very bottom.
Four, four, I was just looking to see what page I'm on.
Wait a minute, we're going, we're going way too fast.
So you're, we're at the, I'm one page above where you just were looking at. So I'm on agenda packet, page forty-four, budget page forty.
Okay, so now go to the very bottom of that fund. And you'll see there should be.
No, I'm on forty-five.
Other fund financing sources. And so use, use of cash reserves is, is the delta of that seven to the six mil for the bonds, and so you're at 1.3.
Forty-one.
Forty-one, okay.
Yeah, so if you look at page forty, go back, go, go to page forty, which is the first page for the general fund three hundred capital projects. If you look at the top, the revenues for everything that we want to do in fiscal twenty-four is six million, seventy thousand, two hundred dollars. Okay, you follow?
Yep.
All right, now if you go to the bottom of the next page, under where it says other financing sources and uses, if you see use of cash reserves, 1.3 million, that would come out of the general fund cash reserves.
Now, hold on a minute, the six million, that's coming from the bond.
Yes.
So the only debt we have.
The delta is the 1.3 million.
Okay.
Yeah.
What is the principal and interest payment on the six million?
That is.
That's what we've got to cover.
It's up in the budget farther, yeah, and Steven calculated all of that, that's part of debt service payments and that will not show up in the oh oh one.
It's caught too.
It's, it, no, it's a separate calculation that we, there's, same with the Lake Pink projects, it's not part of the oh oh one budget, it's a separate calculation.
It's not in the non-advalorem tax?
Correct, debt service cannot be included in that number that we send out, so the non-advalorem does not include debt service, and it says that in all the letters that go out, so.
Something's wrong here.
Our assessments do include a debt service piece.
They do, but it's not included.
But no, this letter reflects the O and assessments, because we already, we've already validated the debt.
Yeah, but Tony, you know that the principal and interest on the debt we have is paid for either one of two ways, it's through our utilities.
It's included in the, it's included in the total that goes on the non-advalorem line on the tax bill, but.
What page, please?
But it's part of a debt service assessment.
It's a different lineup.
Not the O and M assessment.
It's, it's a different page.
It's a different lineup.
Yes.
But not in, not in the tax bill. And the tax bill.
Ask it one more time.
Let me just find the right one, let me, just a second, let me, let me find it, just.
When, when you're doing this, Steven is dividing this number on page twelve to come up with our assessment, there is no.
If you look at the budget, budget page thirty-six, if you notice, it says series twenty twenty-three, one debt service gateway assessment area. This is the interest expense for next year.
Five eleven?
Yes.
Nine eighty-five.
For the bond.
For the bond, yes.
This is bond, this is.
And this would be the, the portion that gets assessed, this is the gateway portion.
And this five eleven for the oh oh one fund is in our non-advalorem calculations, correct?
Yes.
What page is it on, on?
It's on that page you're looking at right there.
Okay, no.
So then if you go to the next page, it will not show up in the oh oh one, they are separate funds.
Okay.
So, but it's included in the total, so.
So what you're saying then is Steven has got.
Those tables that he crunched off, that he crunched for us, has a line that has all the operating expenses, and if you remember, there's another table where it says debt assessment or debt service amount, and it's included in that. So it's in those tables, so when we came up with the percentages for the increases and what the total assessments were going to be, it is included in that.
I'm looking at the one up front, that's where I'm trying to see it, and I, I'm not seeing it.
Is that page twelve, I guess?
Page four, I couldn't find it.
Budget page twelve or agenda book page twelve?
It's budget page twelve, I believe.
Trying to get there, it's before, here.
Page sixteen.
Uh, that's a bad one. That's Pelican. He, I know he put it in here, because I saw it.
So you're saying, just make sure that we're right here.
Wasn't that it?
On.
There's it.
Here, right here.
On page seven.
If you.
Where we show four million, eight twenty-nine, one nineteen, special assessment levy, that is the money that's coming from the, uh, what do you call it? Non-advalorem tax.
Page seven?
Page seven.
Budget page seven or agenda book page seven?
Budget, budget, everything he's going to tell the budget, because he doesn't have the.
All right.
Yeah. Page, yeah, budget page seven, that's seven, four million, eight twenty-nine.
I don't have it, my page seven doesn't have that number on there, so.
It's the top of page, it's in red.
Yeah.
It's top, it's top of page in red. It's the number that, as I understand it, is when we do the distribution that Russ and Steve do, and you add up every dollar of all of our users in oh oh one, it will total four million, eight twenty-nine. What you're telling me now is that five hundred thousand is someplace else, and I sure as hell don't see where it's at.
It is right here.
What page?
This is page one.
So you're saying that seven seventy-nine?
Yeah, that's it.
That's seven seventy-nine is in, in our non-advalorem tax calculations?
Seven seventy, I don't see a seven seventy-nine.
That's the total.
Are you talking about the capital projects fund?
Yeah, it's the five eleven.
The third category debt.
The two oh five oh seven oh eight.
Do what?
You're talking about the capital projects funds?
Uh, debt service funds.
Debt service.
So if you look on the page that's on the screen, which is budget page one.
The capital that's coming from the debt, the only thing that we need to cover is the principal interest.
Correct.
That's the only thing we need to cover.
And I think what's important is, all of those revenues, the O and M and the debt service are levied as non-advalorem assessments, it's just that one is for the oh oh one fund, which is the general fund for O and M, and the other balance is in the debt service.
Debt service, correct.
But they are all in the larger number of the special assessment.
There's actually two components of the total that shows up on the text, and Steven's actually on the, he's.
Yeah. What the total is, that is what you're looking for?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to take and get the breakdown that we have that shows eight twenty-three, twenty-three, that calculation of a single family. I want to see that, what are the numbers divided?
This right here.
That are including that seven hundred thousand there as debt service. If that's in there, I'm happy, Laura.
So Steven, the, the, you can see the screen, the table that I'm showing, that includes the debt service? The eight twenty-three, twenty-three includes debt service?
Which debt service, so we're clear?
Uh, all of it.
Steven, good example is the series two oh two-three dash one bond debt service gateway area, that's the oh oh one. That five hundred eleven, we are being told, that is the principal and interest on that, what was it, seven million?
There, Ed, I can, I can answer that really quickly. The principal and interest for the two thousand and three dash one to two thousand and three dash two were all included in the initial bond sources. So there's already money in the bank account for those two bonds, you're not collecting anything in twenty twenty-four, that was the way the bonds were set up, so you didn't have to do that the first year.
So we've, we've been chasing around a goose. It's not in there to begin with.
It doesn't have to be.
I didn't ask that. It was the way it was set up.
That's correct.
But next year, welcome to sticker shock, I have a feeling. Correct?
That is correct.
For two years, is it? Or is it two years and you skip the third?
It'll be, it'll be twenty twenty-five.
Okay, two years.
That'll be the year the shoe falls.
That'll be the year the shoe falls.
So the, the tax bills that go out at the end of twenty twenty-four.
Bottom line is, it's not included, it was included in the debt financing.
Yeah, debt, but there is debt service included in that total.
The budget.
Yes.
But it's part of the capitalized interest that was part of the bond issue.
Correct.
Yeah.
But it only covers the bond, the existing stuff, the series twenty thirteen and Lake Pink.
I'm just trying to get the session that we can answer the simple question, what percentage do we want to fund capital? And right now, until we know what the hell it is, I don't know how in hell we can even have a legitimate talk about it. I wasn't aware that this was, we may have been told, I wasn't aware that we were deferred for the first two years.
Yeah.
So we don't have that five hundred thousand, that five hundred thousand being in this budget would take that day, then we'd be up there in your neck of the woods, Bob, with, with a deal. So that's neither here nor there, but the issue is, it's cut for twenty twenty-four.
For twenty twenty-four.
So the combination of that number and that coverage plus the two seventy-nine, now my question is, are we financing at a hundred percent of our capital reserve needs?
So Steven, I'm going to back up a little bit because you missed the first part of the conversation. Uh, what Mr. Tinkle is trying to figure out is for the projects that are not funded by the bond, which would be on, are the rest of the capital projects.
Which is the one, 1.3, right?
Which is the 1.3 million dollars that shows in the, like in the three hundred, that it's being funded from ca, uh, from cash reserves. Where it's not getting funded, are we truly transferring it as a cash reserve or is that number being factored in somewhere else in the budget?
No, that, there is absolutely a portion from the capital project funds, three zero zero, the general fund there, that would have to come out of cash reserves, the way the budget stands right now.
So that we're not at a hundred percent right off the bat?
No, no, we're not at a hundred percent, not for twenty twenty-four.
Rather than us chasing the goose, you tell us, what percentage are we at knowing that we have to, because if you have to draw it out of cash reserves, that, that to me isn't solving any problem. That didn't solve anything.
So, yeah, Laura, if you, if you go to the summary page, um, this is actually the, the schedule that you put together that shows the capital project, that's towards the, the back end, right, right before the capital project start, that shows you how much is bond related, how much is, you know, basically, you know, cash reserves, right there, one back.
Based on your calculations, Steve, what is that number for the, we don't have to.
Forty-eight to budget, you know, not look. This one, oh yeah.
How, how much, how much money do we have to pull out?
One more back.
One more back.
Yeah.
Right here. Right here.
Right there. If you go to the top, it shows you the exact number up to to up to the top there when you look at the very beginning of that. Right there. So one point three would have to come out of cash reserves of the.
Okay, so one point three has to come out of cash reserves and we have two hundred and seventy nine that we're putting putting in. What else are we putting in to know what the percentage is? It looks to me like we're well less than fifty percent right off the bat. In other words, we're living on that cash reserve transfer to make this happen. Correct?
Correct, yes. I mean, you basically admit that.
Simple saying, you take that one point three million, if you weren't doing it that way. Yeah, now maybe this is the way to attack it. If we weren't doing it that way, we just take the one point three million and say every person in Gateway was equivalent. No, that's not true, but let's say it is. We just divide that by six thousand and six thousand into one point three million is what? Two hundred dollars? So eight hundred and fifty three would have been a thousand fifty three if it was a hundred percent funded, if that's what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Uh, so if you if you just round some round round numbers, yeah, I mean, you're right right there, Ed, what you're you're right there, what you're talking about. I mean, if you net the two difference, okay, one point three minus your two seventy nine, it gives you a little bit over a million dollars. You know, and then take a million dollars divided by six thousand, it's about a hundred and seventy five dollars. So you're right there in what you're talking about.
So bottom line, we have already uh, reduced this from a hundred percent down to thirty percent or less. We're not at a hundred percent.
You're saying one point three is not at a hundred percent.
No, the one point three is a hundred percent. We're not funding the reserves for a hundred percent. We only did two hundred and seventy nine thousand off the one point three.
We're stealing it out of our kitty.
We're gonna we're gonna spend at a hundred percent, but we're not going to.
Fund.
Collect.
We're not going to collect.
If we make the decision to fund it fifty percent, and this has got to go up to reflect that.
Uh, the two seventy nine's got to go up substantially, probably another two.
And you think we no longer have the the flexibility to do that?
That depends on what the total adjustments are to the budget. We can move some stuff around.
You you'd have to.
Or just not do some capital projects.
We can't go over the set amount.
Right.
So we we can we can that up, but something something has to give somewhere else.
Okay, then then my question gets to heart of it. Where who came up with that number? The one point three says, we have deferred deciding at what percent we want to fund it.
Yeah, if we were, that that that's a good question. If we were wanting to do this at a hundred percent as our high watermark, then this should have been, the one point three wouldn't have been in there. It would not have been.
That's exactly.
I think that's what you're saying.
Well, and I I think, so I don't.
I think.
The question is, where did the number come from? But two, I I don't think. I thought we were we were all more in alignment with, let's start at fifty percent.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
You know?
I'm I'm there.
So.
We don't even do that.
We were hoping, I was hoping today that we might be able to come and reduce what we got right now.
Right, because we were at fifty percent and then.
Yeah. So, okay, well, the bottom line is we're going to live good this year and year after next.
Well, but 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 look at the same schedule. Oh, that's just the parking deck memo. Because look, well, the total really drops dramatically, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine.
Yeah.
The trouble is, it's going to be that sour taste in your mouth in twenty five.
Yeah.
The first two years, yep.
Well, that's, I mean, must say it. This is just another exercise we'll have next year. Other factors.
Yeah, but the cash reserves have your bond funds in them.
No, bonds are separate. Cash, yeah. The the bonds need to be held in a separate, the bonds need to be held in a separate account, so cash reserves do not include the bond funds.
At this point in time, I'm not ready to charge up San San Juan Hill here on this. We've got the cash in reserves. That's somewhat a purpose of having the reserves. So use it. Use it to the advantage of keeping this rate down. Then if we would go back and say we wanted to go to fifty percent, we'd have to tag this thing and take it up to close to a thousand bucks to make it work. Or, as Doug was saying, we start doing this transfer stuff. And I, we've got, in my opinion, a very good budget. We now start fiddle farting with it and we're going to do the same thing that we've done years and years and years. We kicked the can down the road. Right now, it looks very solid, but I'd stick with it. Go on the basis, let's take the one point three million, we'll transfer it over. But just be aware, next year when we have this conversation, it's not going to be.
We'll have to have more prioritizing conversations. We'll have to look at the plan. Uh, because now the we don't factor in stuff that needs to get done, we have to factor in how we pay for things that we've already done. Yeah, or or you know, or the much larger scale.
Now I understand where we're at. I I could not at home make the math add. I sat there with these numbers of the capital reserve study. I said, somebody lost a decimal point someplace.
Well, at least we understand now.
Where it's at now. We were using the reserves to supplement the budget. Okay.
But you know, Ed, that's a good point and we should remember it when we sit down and do our goals.
I'm going to annotate my twenty twenty four discussion today so that next year.
No, no, I mean, at the beginning, at the beginning of budgeting, we should tell next year.
Yes.
We should have a percent. We want X percent in the capital reserve.
Well, well, where you start is.
Know what our reserve account is to begin with.
Right.
As to what extent we will want to take and let's say rob from it to subsidize this.
Well, I think our our guiding principle is.
And how much do we have to put in then to get there?
So we we've set a baseline. So our our guiding principle around uh, capital reserves is funding between thirty and fifty percent. This year, we'll be funding it at thirty percent. So at the beginning of budget conversation, one next year, Laura and Chelsea will have to remind the boards. Uh, philosophy around this is between thirty and fifty percent. And the first conversation has to be, and we were at thirty percent today. So if you want to have additional conversation, we start it. That's one of the starting conversations.
And if you want forty percent, you're going to have to put in this much money.
Yeah, well, and the point of consideration there and how this all kind of ties back is if we're at thirty and we want to maybe over time trend closer to fifty. We've got the uh, we've got the bond or the uh, the dollar amounts we were talking about earlier that we won't start um. It won't hit budget until uh, the second year, which will be twenty five. So we'll have an increase there. So the opportunity or the appetite to maybe to go up another ten percent or twenty percent on reserves might be challenging.
Steve?
That makes sense.
We're we're looking at three, three and a half, three, six, somewhere in that neighborhood for this building. Where's that at?
Uh, the 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 building, the main building is going to come out of the bond money. And it's in two, it's in three different places within uh, the the budget for the capital package. A general fund's got a piece.
That three point six million, where do I see the three?
It's not going to, it's, yeah, it's not going to be in one specific spot because like I said, it's split. But uh, budget package page, uh, well, keep going, Laura, if you want to just keep scrolling from where you're at, because there's the first piece. Main building.
Main building. That's eight eighty five.
Right here. Uh, this is budget page forty eight.
But what I what I'm getting through, Steve, is there is no component of that financing for the building in this twenty twenty four budget. Is that correct?
No, no, there is. There absolutely is.
Bond proceeds.
It's just going to come out of bond proceeds.
Right.
So it's it's not going to have to be funded by, there's no additional funding required because it's already been funded through the bond.
So what 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 where's that?
So right here, this one, here's the eight eighty five that gets applied.
Got you.
And that's part of it. And then.
Okay, that's it.
Right there.
Okay, well, since we're on these charts, the capital improvement plan, the charts that are in front of us.
Here's one point nine.
On that very first page, I've got a page fifty, but whatever the very first page of these charts.
This page?
Yes, yes. About uh, two thirds of the way down, you have basketball goals, eight thousand dollars.
It should say soccer. They go about two thousand dollars a pair.
What are you looking at?
The very first chart.
Did you find that Navy toilet seat?
I have page fifty, but it's probably a different. It's the very first page of these charts.
Okay.
Okay, about two thirds of the way down.
Under which heading? I'm assuming it's Parks and Rec.
It's on page fifty.
It's under Parks and Recs.
Yeah.
Actually, that was the old number.
Yes, Parks and Recs.
Do you want this?
Got it.
And it says basketball goals, eight thousand dollars.
Five of them.
Thousand in in the blue.
Got it, yep.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Where are we putting up basketball goals?
Laura said they should say soccer goals.
No, 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 that's that's correct. The soccer's above it.
Oh, soccer's above.
The soccer's above it.
Yeah, those are forty thousand.
We had had problems with teenagers playing at bad times and whatever and we were going to just hold off on basketball courts and stuff like that for a while.
And this isn't fun park. This isn't replacement, right?
This was under the Parks and Rec. I.
It would be a replacement of the existing basketball goals at the fun park.
And adding, well, we only have one right now because they took one out.
There was one broken for church the other day.
I thought our our position was we weren't adding anything new to the fun park.
There's eight thousand dollars you can cut out of the budget.
Now, if we're saying, if we're saying that eight thousand would be for replacement regardless of where the location is, then that's a little, that's a little something different, but.
It is eight thousand dollars for two basketball hoops.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it doesn't say location, like see how.
No.
A basketball hoop costs four thousand dollars?
I was going to say.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, because they have to have a special word and all that, yeah.
For commercial grade basketball hoops, they are four thousand dollars each.
Go down, go down to uh, uh, Dix and they got them two, three thousand bucks for the L cheapos. Okay, I understand.
Well, but my position would be, we don't, we don't do any replacement at the fun park.
Well, you have to replace that playground stuff.
No, not if not if we're not if we're moving forward with.
Relocating it.
Not if we're moving forward with moving the dog park to the fun park.
Well, yes.
And then that.
I think that's a great.
Moves to the common.
I think that's a great point of discussion because we've danced around it and so has the the Parks and Rec committee has um, provided their stance and I think it would be a great opportunity right now for the board to discuss. Um, and and, you know, come up with a policy that we can proceed with next fiscal year.
Because right now, as you can see, the first line on this page, it has two hundred and five thousand dollars to move the dog park to the.
Well, I think the the first position is, I would say, you know, because there's uh, soccer park here, fun park, commons park. And there's improvement plans over those. I wouldn't, I I wouldn't do any modifications or improvements to the fun park as it sits today, period. Now, that goes to the next thing is, do we want to fund the move from the existing dog park to the fun park? With the with the concept that the amenities that are at the fun park today would be either replaced or, you know, maybe not apples to apples, but that would migrate to the commons park. But I have a question because that two hundred and five thousand for the fun park seems like a big number.
A lot of questions.
Um, you know.
I think that was with the new toast that they wanted and all that sort of stuff.
Fence.
Dogs, doggy turf.
It was fence and all that kind of stuff.
So actually, I visited the fun park yesterday because I wanted to know like what we stand. So as of right now, the playground structure, all the repairs were completed. The swings, everything is fine, the mulch, everything.
At the fun park.
At the fun park. The basketball hoop, it's fine. The the only item that's, I think it looks like it's in the middle of it. They're completing uh, fixing the cracks on the basketball court. So the basketball court is painted, but it has white lines all over, you know, because they're, so if there's only one item that needs to be done there is just to paint the paint the basketball court.
But but if.
And that's done because I know you didn't want to spend it, but they already did it. So there is not after.
Well, but that's fine. That's, I mean, if if it's if it's nominal, that's fine. But if what we're trying to decide is if we're looking to fund, to move, start the project, to move the dog park from the soccer field over to the fun park, you're going to have to, well, maybe not phase one, but phase two, you're going to have to remove that stuff. I mean, there is room.
So so.
But I don't think you could do both. It it doesn't make sense to do both.
Yes, so I guess they need to decide on the location. I visited yesterday. I have the easiest way would be to leave the items there, they're existing because they're not broken.
Well, that takes away of the of the point seven. So but we we, the whole purpose was, we've got point seven five acres at the dog park today. The fun park in its totality is.
One point seven.
One point seven. So are you saying that we have room?
You have room on the, just on what the grass area is to create a dog park that is for large and and small dogs.
To replace an apple.
Bigger, bigger than what we have now.
And then there is additional space.
For the victory.
At some point in the future, when we're ready to, you know, uh, to put the amenities at the commons park, if that's what we so choose, that we would either sunset the fun park, the playground equipment, the basketball goal and the volleyball. And then and then there's additional land we could do.
Whatever.
You know, there there's talk about.
Slowly, I have one question.
Yeah.
If we take the dog park and and move it, as we just said, is that consistent with what our Parks and Rec?
Yes, that that's the recommendation.
Okay.
Yes, but the Parks and Recs had questions and and I know a member reached out to me yesterday regarding the specifically the four hundred thousand dollars that was originally in the budget. Because there was some confusion. Originally, staff, Tim, I'm just going to instead of saying staff. So Tim had set four hundred thousand dollars to replace the turf with artificial turf.
Wait, that's his parking net.
Yeah. I know, but that's.
Sorry, didn't mean to.
The Parks and Recs committee and the Parks and Recs user never initiated that project because it wasn't something that the Parks and Recs user wanted. I mean, the dog wanted, so they they wanted that to remove. They want to know if that was removed or not.
And the answer is?
I don't think they have an answer because Tim was on vacation. So I couldn't provide the answer neither.
And that's the two oh five you're talking about. Because four hundred, that's where that's where they build the parking out.
But.
It's two different.
But originally, on this version, the original version was four hundred.
Uh, no, I I have, you're talking about the version before the last one?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So they wanted to know what is the two oh five? What is that? Is that the, because in their mind, all they want is they want to use the existing uh, benches and items that are there because they're all in good shape. They just move over and they want to fence the area. That is stage one. That's all they needed for right now. Everything else is already there. The grass is in the condition that they believe is is good. So that's phase one. But then they want to add a bathroom bathroom structure and also have uh, FP um, lighting and also have water. So maybe that's what that two oh five is, including all of those items. I do not know and.
Can I chime in?
Yeah.
So the this set the high watermark and I actually, I have a meeting with a Parks and Rec advisory committee member next week and we're going to actually get true estimates to move the dog park to the fun park, but from a principal perspective, and that's where some of these big ticket items on here. Uh, Laura, can you minimize that for just a second? So 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 as a principal, does the board agree with moving the dog park to the fun park? And then in that same token, you know, Doug, you've kind of touched on some of these, you know, do we want to reinvest in the fun park? Or are we looking to, for instance, below, there's a hundred thousand dollars for playground equipment. Instead of replacing at the fun park, do you want to put that equipment elsewhere? So those basic principles, we need clarified first.
Okay, so I'm kind of coming at this from.
Carol, can you make sure you bend your microphone?
I'm kind of coming at this from the point of view that our soccer fields and our pools are both moneymakers. We're trying to make money on them. They bring in revenue. They're revenue sources. So what do you have to do to make your soccer fields premium so you can charge premium dollars? And what do you have to do to the pool to bring more people there? I think if you could just do those items in twenty four, we would have a really good start. Now, maybe part of making the soccer fields all that they could be would be you got to have more parking. And that would mean moving the dog park over and things like that. But I don't think people are clamoring for a beautiful uh, fun park right now in Gateway. So I think we should go to the assets that we have that are bringing in revenue and make them all that they could be. And if that includes a um, a turf field or turf farm somewhere or that you could put in like in the back of this property or something or or things like that, how could we take the revenue that we're getting but make it even more?
Yeah.
If we had a premier product.
And and my position is on this, and first let me, Chelsea.
And that's why I'm coming.
Outside of improvement specifically to the pool uh, and items directly related to the administrative building, do we have any other uh, budgeted dollars for any other improvements for the commons park?
In the bond, we do have some funding in this first series. I think it's about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for improvements at the commons property, which is to be determined.
Okay, and I'll piggyback kind of on what Carol said. I mean, today, the dog park is working. Okay, and I'll piggyback kind of on what Carol said. I mean, today, the dog park is working for the most part. Um, the complaints come in are normally minor. Parking is an issue. Um, I do think it's a priority. However, um, we do have places for the, for people to park. It's just a matter of enforcing it. Um, and that's at the school. Where, to your point, what we're trying to do is increase revenue opportunity and increase, uh, amenities for residents to increase satisfaction. So I would much rather table the dog park, personally, table the dog park and the, and the, and the, um, the parking, push it back one more year, use some of these dollars to do, enhance our phase one at the commons park. Whether it's something simple like walking trails, um, putting good, you know, turf down, maybe a couple pickleball, courts and, and playground because that's.
But that's not going to be under construction next year. That stuff we should do in '25.
Well, so we'll be, yeah, I guess we'll be under construction the full, the full year.
That's why.
Full year, okay, yeah.
So I, I think you could push all of that stuff to '25, but.
Because you're physically not going to start construction.
You're physically not going to be able to start.
No, that building.
The needs are 2024, 23, but the actual construction will take 2025. And I think.
That's interesting.
So I, I'm in line with both of you when it comes to the dog park. I don't, I think transition one, just do the minimal, just move it over there. The parking that needs to be done here, either we do it in 2024 because you can break ground on that, or do grass pa- parking on that area, you know, for the first year and then do 2025, then you, you, you do the road. Um, I just, I just think for right now, I would have lowered the dog park amount that's two of five. I would, I would have gone half of it. Because the needs of what they ask for, I cannot.
So can we, what we need to figure out is, what is the dollar amount we need for, to do a light lift and shift? Lift and shift over to the area. We're not going to focus on improvement. The improvement is the location.
Yes.
Um, and if there's an opportunity, because I've heard, you know, uh, if there is the space and it might come in phase two, if we decommission the, the playground in that area, is instead of two dog park areas, you create a third. That way you can rotate when you're doing maintenance and two, um, people have asked for like the third for agility and, and some other type of stuff.
This, this 1,434, I think this is bottom of that page total. Is that coming through the bond?
No, if you look at this, it's color coded.
Yeah.
Anything that's in yellow is part of capital. Anything that's in green is the bond. So for this particular part is, yeah.
It's cash in our 001, uh, non ad verum tax.
Sure. It, this is part of that 1.3 million that's going to come from the cash reserves. That's where this would come from because there's only, in this particular Parks and Rec portion, only 250,000 of it is coming from the bond.
Well, I'm, I'm getting the feeling that we're moving toward to try to cut the, the ad verum tax and this isn't going to do nothing on that. Nothing.
Well, not unless you remove it. I mean, if you're removing 600,000 is, but I think what, what I'm hearing is it, it makes it from, from a process or from a phase perspective, it would make sense to move the dog park next year because we're going to be in construction at the commons area and it would probably 2025 before we could sunset any of the fun park stuff anyway. So from a sequencing perspective, it makes sense to do it.
But my point is, is that the cash.
But not priority.
This is not like, originally I was saying, well, that's 600,000.
Ain't gonna happen.
But that's not going to happen. If you do pull it, you might cut, you know, maybe 150,000 out of it, maybe 200 at the most and that's not going to move the dial the, the way we were thinking originally.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think you, the question is, well, Chelsea, the answer to your first question, yes, I think, you know, we, it sounds like we want to keep the, the, those items in for next year.
They're, they're estimates at this point in time, but I mean, they're, they're these small potatoes to the big picture.
Yeah.
Small potatoes.
And it puts us in, in, in the right direction.
I do have a question. So additional.
Okay, so what, what did we decide?
We're gonna keep it as it is?
Keep it as it is.
So you agree that you.
Let me, let me chime in real quick. So keep in mind, you know, if you collect these revenues and we don't spend that $400,000 for the additional parking at the soccer complex, that money will still be there in 2025.
It goes into the reserves, yes. Whatever we don't.
Yeah, so that's why I'm not getting all.
So we stay with grass this year and do it 25?
Not worried about it right now. If this were a cash deal or a bond deal, that's totally different deal. It's coming out of cash. Cash should still be there. We just don't spend.
Okay.
But, but from a principal perspective, from operationally, we need to know where the board stands with regards to moving the dog park to the fun park, which it sounds like principally we want to do bare minimum, cost it out in between now and August, that, as to what that would take, fencing or shade structure, reusing whatever we can. Um, and then also, I didn't really hear any input with regards to the existing equipment at the fun park. Do we want to replace in kind, um, at, at the fun park or are we looking to transition?
Unless it, unless there is a liability or some, which we'd have discussions around, I think.
We just were moving.
Me personally, we would not invest any additional dollars in the fun park outside of the dog park transition.
And on the dog park, you could do a, a Spartan change over there and then you could do any bells and whistles.
Yeah.
In set phase two.
Yeah.
But to get it moved over there, I think would be a.
It has to, it has to be at least equal to what they have today, uh, as far as functional, you know? And.
Well, and.
And I think we need to talk about the fact scenario because I am kind of on the fence about putting up a bathroom facility, um, you know, in that one location because you're only, you're talking about servicing a small, very small amount for a, a large expense.
And, and I think, so just let me go back. The, the, the bathroom is not something that was requested by the dog park users.
Came through the committee.
It came through the committee.
For the garden because they would have to have source of water. So if you're gonna bring water and electricity to take care of the garden.
And that's phase two, yeah.
And I totally agree with that.
I, I say, I would pull that item out, um, of consideration for next year.
It definitely goes to phase two.
Yeah, that one goes to phase two.
Go to the bathroom before you go.
And, and I want to be, I want. I want to be clear because construction of the admin building, although it will be a large task, that's not saying other construction elsewhere on the commons property can't occur. I know originally on that Holmontes plan that was done a couple years ago, it had called for a playground, uh, uh, equipment literally right next to the pool. Um, so that's not saying, I mean, and that takes time and we all know lead times on all ti- all kinds of equipment and materials, there's long lead times. So that's not saying some of these ideas can't be put in motion anticipating the opening of either the admin building or whatever additional amenities you choose.
Yeah, we, we, we're gonna take that second part slowly. Uh, you, you want all hell to break loose in this community. Just mentioned that you're building that building and then on top of it, you're going to bid in that front or that park. I don't care what amenities you're go- go put in. You're gonna bring people out of the woodwork. Don't even go dunk down that road right now. Let that committee come up with all their ideas and all that's that and the other and have a big discussion. Have a big town hall meeting and if we don't get shot bringing it up, we go from there.
Okay, so can I make a suggestion? So under the, on, on this same page, like, uh, the fifth or fourth item, playground equipment, this says fun park. Can we just keep it as playground equipment and remove the word fun park? Because the goal is, so at least we keep the $100,000 and it doesn't have to be at the fun park because I think that the majority of the board agrees that we would not do anything there.
Which item do you want?
It would be this one right down here.
$100,000.
Second to the last in the yellow.
Because then, then, then we can explain, this would have, we would have do it anyways at the fun park. We're just moving location. The dollar was going to be there no matter what.
Just take fun park out.
Exactly.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, so.
I know.
What, what other items from this list realistically aren't going to be done this year and could be put over into '25?
Uh, I think the only one we, we talked about was the basketball goals. That the only thing that needs to be done there is just painting on the.
It's just painting, so you could remove that and, um.
I mean, if you just.
Well, I want to, I want to touch on the additional parking at the, at the Sherman Soccer Complex because I don't recall if it's at today's meeting or at your next meeting. There is a task authorization that we will be bringing to you for a, a maintenance building, like a, like the building that you guys are in, a metal building, uh, for public works at the back of that Sherman Soccer Complex. And, and discussing with Tetra Tech, I guess there were some previous designs for an RV park back there. So we wanted to take those existing designs that were done some years ago. That way they're not wasted. Combine them with the, um, current design of a maintenance building uh, or for utilities and kind of merge those two and also expand the parking. So we have the opportunity to kill a couple, couple birds with a single stone, but I don't, I truly don't foresee construction um, happening at least for another year unless you just leave it as, you know, put, maybe we put some gravel down or leave it as grass. But it's going to take a while for permitting for all of those things.
Yeah, so you're saying for the additional soccer, uh, for the parking, uh, we're gonna just be moving so, you know, that, that we wouldn't actually build out a, a formal parking area next year. So we'd have to figure out, is there, is there an intermediate solution, which is gravel it or just let it stays grass? I mean, I hate to gravel over grass.
I would just keep, I would just keep it a grass. I mean, we have it at the pool. Um, the amount of the usage, it, it's parking, so it's not like they're going, it's not driving, so I think it'd be fine. I would keep some amount for the stones and the stones average are $45 each. Either the rubber or the.
Oh, you mean the bumpers?
The parking bumpers, yeah. So the bumpers are around $45 each. So if anything, I would remove that $400,000 for, from the next year because we're not going to do anything and just put the, and greatly reduce it just for, you know.
Take it down to like, like a hundred K, just.
That's plenty. That's the only thing, that's the only thing that I could see reducing on this item.
And again, it's capital, coming out of capital reserves.
It's coming out of cash.
If we do it next year, we do it next year, we do it the year after, it's gone.
Well, didn't you want to also take away half of the two oh five, the very first one?
No, because Chelsea's meet, meeting with somebody next week and they're gonna give us more accurate numbers. So if we're gonna do it, do it at one time and maybe, you know.
When's our, when's our, when do we have to finalize this budget?
The 17th.
The 17th of August is our public hearing.
So here's what I would do. I would just put, put a circle around the 400. Was keep it as is today. Um, and then it's one of the items that we can look to reduce as we get closer to the finish line.
But to the person out there that's going to.
Well, we can do some homework on those two items and if those are the two that, that the board, um, would like us to look further in detail at, we can go back and, and actually solicit quotes and things like that and come back with true and accurate numbers.
Yeah, but that, what I'm saying, we could reallocate that and I'm saying, if we do reduce it, we could just reallocate it somewhere else. Maybe we go in reserves or, you know, somewhere.
Okay. Okay, I have another question on these same charts. Two charts after this one. The one that says capital improvement plan enterprise fund.
Yeah.
Uh, third from the end, pole barn, 800,000. So this is coming from the enterprise fund. So this is the water and sewer.
Correct.
Correct.
So they need a pole barn somewhere?
We are out of room for our inventory. Uh, that's the building that we're gonna build right out here where they'll be able to keep their inventory in there. So that'll give us some place to actually have more, be able to carry more inventory, especially with the long lead times. It'll help us be better, um, better prepared.
On this property.
Yeah, it'll go right out here and it's gonna go right out behind here, the parking lot. Yeah, in that open area. That's why it's all kind of cleaned out now. So that's where it's gonna go. So it'll be.
We're wrapped. We're almost done with permitting. We got our South Florida Water Management District permit approved. We're waiting on Lee County. Um, and, and as soon as we get the clear, we'll bid it out and we'd like to get it under construction. This was previous, I, I believe one or two years ago.
Yes.
This pole barn was on, on the enterprise's CIP and it just.
Okay.
And this is, this is on today's meeting, uh, the construction phase services from Tetra Tech.
Yes.
Oh, that's the pole. Oh.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Tetra Tech on the Janet today, 10A, that's the public works done by the dog park. That's, that's not this building.
Oh, that's the other one.
This is the utility building. Yeah, this is when Austin did the whole presentation on with all the different options of what we could build it with and everything originally like a couple of years ago.
And do, we don't, do we fund any of the pole barn expenses for this year? Just didn't use it?
Uh, Stephen, I think there was some in the budget for the utilities one because we thought we were gonna do, there was some of the design. I think we funded enough to cover the design of it and the permitting.
Okay, and then one, uh, second to the last page on these charts again. It's my page 53, but I don't know what page it would be.
This one?
It's Pel- the Pelican Preserve Fund.
I got 52.
Okay.
Okay. Um, on the top one administration, Boardwalk Parking. Is this? Where, where is this parking going?
Do you know, Phil?
No, I, I don't know that there's even any place.
Yeah.
It says it's provided by KW.
KW suggested it, so somebody must have.
Yeah, it says provided by KW, but where is this going?
Okay, I, I think that this is the result of the limited access for ADA. And at the present time, people are parking wherever they want. Some of it's on Sienna property.
Is it parking over by the Brockie Center? Is it parking over on Pelican Preserve?
When you say Brockie Center, no, I'm talking specifically at Conservation Area Six where they are parking along the McAdam Path illegally.
Because they cannot go in anymore.
And, and you can't park there either because it's a conservation area.
Right.
So the concept was we're going to have to provide parking subway wherever it's appropriate. We're a long way from there and I've spoken with Chelsea and there may be an opportunity in this next year to kind of revisit this with South Florida, the whole access.
We, yeah, we touched on it about a year ago with them.
So.
So this would depend on, on permission from South Florida?
Depending on where you want to put it, yeah.
Yes, and the answer is they're not going to give it to us. So we have to come up with some other way, place to do it.
So, well.
I don't think it needs to be in here, by the way.
Does it need to be in here?
Not until we have clarity in what we're gonna do. I agree with you. I think that that can be.
Okay, so could we just push this 15,000 out to?
One more year.
25, 26?
Sounds reasonable to me.
And then take it off of the totals, whatever it is.
And what page do you want, Carol?
52.
52.
Yeah, page 52. Alright, so it's, any other, it's a 310, 310.
Do you need to bounce that off?
Feedback, obviously, yes.
Okay, so that's another item we'll circle.
It goes without saying, every.
We don't hard remove it now, but it's an area we circle.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, and we're pushing it off to another year, not including it in this year's figures. Okay, yeah.
Well, and maybe, maybe KW has identified a location and we're just not privy to it, but that's, this is one of the, the ones that we can follow back up with you guys at your next meeting.
And I'm pretty sure they haven't, Chelsea. It's, it was just a contingency amount.
So.
Fill it, fill it.
So are we good with this and?
Okay, are we?
We're seven minutes after three, just so you're ready.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We can always talk, we can come, I think it's on the bug agenda again. It's on, it's, we can, if you want to pause and we can just pick up here and we get to that part of the agenda at 3 o'clock.
Sure.
Yeah, because we'll just talk about it again.
Because we're seven minutes after.
Because I have a couple more.
Okay, so let's go ahead.
We'll do it again.
Yeah, let's go ahead. Do you guys want a break? Bob?
I'm fine.
I'm fine.
Right now, good.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll call the 3 o'clock.
Jurn the workshop. Jurn the workshop. Motion to adjourn the workshop.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we'll go ahead and we'll call the regular budget meeting to order and let's all stand up.
Regular board meeting.
What did I say?
You sound like me. Apparently, yeah, okay.
My loyal allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so present, we have Carol, Doug, Ed, Bob and myself. Um, I need a motion for approval of the final agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment. Laura, who do we have?
Um, I have two. The first one is. Yes, um, well, the first one is Faye. She's got item 70, the Pelican expense reimbursement audit. Yep, announce who you are and I'll give you your three minutes.
Hi, Faye Fromoso with Pelican Preserve Community Association. Um I'm here to speak on the agenda item Pelican Preserve expense reimbursement audit. Um and what I wanted to convey to the Board of Supervisors. Um is that Pelican Preserve Community Association is committed to working with the district staff on this matter. Um we think that the best way to resolve it is for us to all meet and go through all of the information together, have the conversations, et cetera. Um so that we can bring it to closure.
Okay.
Thanks, Laura. But that's really all.
Alright, thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I have one non-agenda. I have no idea what it is. It doesn't say. It is Willie Middleton from Hampton Park.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Willie Middleton from Hampton Park Community. Uh I'm here to thank the Board for uh what's going on out at Hampton Park and your property that's next door that you're getting ready to be alone. We're not sure what happened. We're not sure how the mistake happened of us somewhat being on your land or whatever. But we wanna thank everyone for just, I guess we could say, be a good neighbor to us. That, you know, that you didn't come out to beat us up, that you took time out to talk with us. And to come with an agreement to us that would make things good for us, that we don't have to go through changing anything out at Hampton Park on our. Interest way, we just have to allow you to do a few things and we're grateful for that and we appreciate the way you've looked at that. And um like I said, we're not sure what happened, but we do appreciate you and we want you to know that we appreciate you. And we also wanna say a special cue to Chester and Fabia. Um for taking time out of their busy schedule to take time and walk us through your plans. And to let us know that we will be made a part of this plan, that there would take time out to listen to our comments. And our ideas on what we would like, you know, to see as you, you know, go further on your venture, whatever. But anyway, we just wanna say thank you and that we appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Willie, thank you.
We appreciate you appreciating us and anytime, anytime you wanna come back and.
We look forward to being your neighbor.
We're more than welcome.
Yeah.
We look forward to being your neighbor.
Usually it's incoming missiles.
I sound like I'm kind of scared, huh? Thank you.
Thanks for coming, we appreciate it.
Alright, anybody else online or emails?
Uh no, I, no, there's no one else online, no other emails. Those are the only two I had for a public comment.
Alright, uh local achievements and recognitions?
I have one, tell me. Go ahead. Uh I think Andrew was gonna poke his head in, but um we, as I'm sure you're all aware, we had our our big event up at the pool on July first. And um and I wanna echo the sentiments from Andrew in here. He just wants to make sure to recognize the staff. For all the work they did to make the July first event possible. The public works, the admin team, all of the volunteers, vendors and the outside agencies. And especially the board, subcommittee members and sponsors of the event, they're a huge help. He said it takes a village and we have a pretty great one. We had a largely successful community event that would not have been possible without all of the support and effort from all involved. It said, side note, Tim Vanderpool and Rick even helped a member of the public change a flat tire during the event.
Alright.
One from the hatchet throw, wasn't it?
That I don't know, I wasn't there, so I don't know.
You know, I did have, um I I think that's, that's two events that we've done recently, you know, resurrecting the the. Christmas tree lighting ceremony or holiday ceremony, which was really successful and then this one. I did have several people ask and it might have been because of how the July fourth fell this year. You know, being in the middle of the week, that, you know, would we consider in the future doing something uh on July fourth? You know, having a, you know, a centralized um location for people to come and, you know. I don't know if we would do fireworks, but you know, there's, there are some things around here, but that might be an opportunity for next year. Uh is doing something on July fourth, that's maybe some location, which is like.
Middle next year.
Right, we have Thursday next year.
Which is, which is really like, like.
Wednesday or Friday.
Thursday, next year it's on Thursday.
Which that's why I like, that's, that's why I think like the commons part built out would be really, would be a great centralized place to be able to have, you know, some area we can all get together. Um and do something like that.
Thursday.
Good job, great job, Stan.
Yeah.
Thursday next year.
Yes, Thursday.
Fourth of July.
Yep.
Alright, okay, anything else?
No.
No. Alright, so advisory committees, items to report, Pelican Preserve expense reimbursement audit. Is, is anybody presenting?
That'd be me, I guess, that'd be mine. Um just I'm doing it on behalf of P pack, which they haven't even had a chance to look at this yet. Um I'll be bringing it to their meeting on next Thursday, I guess. I I will defer to Tony for.
Going over this, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think the only request we have is just uh again, affirming the ability of the ma- uh district assistant manager, manager, myself, to meet with the Pelican Reserve. Community Association, their folks and also necessary and and as appropriate, discuss with P pack. Uh and to come back with the board with the resolution or if there are any issues, come back to the board with that also.
Right, and I am, I'm in a total agree with Faye. I mean, I'd like to just sit down, hammer through it and try to sort it out. That's, that's the goal.
Yeah, right now, the current process that we're setting up is that the the process, as I understand, I can be corrected by Faye. Is that we will get documents by July 11th, July 17th, and we're setting up a meeting for July 31st to meet with the P pack folks and their accounts holder if necessary.
PPCA.
PPCA, I'm sorry.
Can we ask a question?
Yeah.
Can we ask a question?
Go ahead.
I I got into hold of this and started reading and I thought, what on earth is this? When we dispense money, was there not something in the way of a sheet of paper?
Not for this.
An itemization of the cost that we're giving them a hundred and thirty-six thousand? We just write it to you?
Oh, no, no.
No, 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 no. What happened is that the funds were transferred from the the operating account that we hold, that that they hold for the reimbursements. To the PPCA operating account. There's nothing that back and up, no, there's no, I don't, that's what we're asking for, that's the documents that we're waiting to see.
So, so somebody did a transfer of this hundred and thirty-six thousand? And they did not know what they were transferring it for?
I think they knew what they were transferring, but they didn't share that with us. So that's what we've requested to have the documents for by the seventeenth of July. Nor, the way that this normally works.
Seems to me that the cattle are so far out of the barnyard, it's not even.
The way, the way this normally works is that um the management company pays certain expenses that the just, like the smaller amount things, the things that they're taking care of for more of the day-to-day type things. And then each month, they submit uh copies of all of the bills along with proof of payment, which is the bank accounts. I can make sure that those checks or deposit or withdrawals actually did come out of the bank account and then we reimburse them back into that bank account. It's supposed to be a completely separate account that's set up just to handle the funds that they're overseeing for district assets inside of Pelican. So this transfer happened from that fund for district assets inside of Pelican to the PPCA operating account. And I did not receive any type of reimbursement request and I have not yet received any documents to back it up. But again, that's what we've requested to receive by July 17th so that I have a chance to look it over.
And can, let me chime in real quick. I wanna be clear. The bank statements, um it's my understanding, and Laura can correct me if I'm wrong. In the past, when the community association would submit these reimbursement requests, the district did not ask for the actual bank statements. Um and we recently, uh Laura last year changed that process. So that way we have, you know, the ebbs and flows of the money going in and out. I also want to relay that Faye um has been very open to resolving this. Um and and clearing, clearing the air um and and trying to, you know, i- if the expenses were actually incurred and we agree, you know, just. Provide proof as stated in the O and M agreement, there's a process in place. Um Laura did this forensic audit and realized that this transfer out occurred. And so we just need that funding accounted for, just like we would do, we would ask the same of Stony Brook with their O and M. Bank account. So we, we do see um a resolution occurring hopefully by the end of the month. And they did uh return a part, did did a partial return of some of the funds to the district uh towards the end of last week. But um we do still expect the remainder of those funds to be returned until we can follow the actual reimbursement process laid out in the O and M. Where they, they provide proof of expenses uh and all of Laura's requirements for a reimbursement submittal. And then the funds would be transferred back.
They're not my requirement, so I'll make that clear. It's laid on the O and M agreement. We're just enforcing that they have to provide proof that the stuff has been paid, so.
So you wanna seal this, the total is one hundred and thirty-six thousand, whatever.
Yes, yes.
And Ed, I don't think it's, it's one, uh the kind of thing that we, that it should be a board-to-board thing. I think this is a staff-to-staff thing right now.
Well, I was going to make that, I'm not getting involved in this.
Until it's gone, until all the papers have been gone through and everything, let's just leave it with the staff.
Bring it to us after the dust.
Right, we should be, we should be able to bring you something at the, at your first meeting in August.
Okay, I just have a clarification what Chelsea's mentioned. So our original demand letter was return the hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And then when you bring me the receipts, then you get the money back.
Right.
And then I believe I read a letter that says.
They returned thirty thousand because they said that they had uh, they had documentation for a hundred, they found it for a hundred and seven thousand of it. But, yeah, so we got thirty thousand of it back.
So, back to what Chelsea just mentioned, is the expectation that the money is gonna return prior to July 17th? And at July 17th, you work things out? Or are, or are they still holding, they're not gonna return us the hundred and thirty?
Hundred and six thousand.
Hundred and six thousand dollars until the July 17th. That's the only item that I want a clarification, because if we're gonna stick to O and M agreement, I would say return the hundred and six thousand dollars.
Our request was for the full.
For amount, that, so I would stay with our request.
Well, I, you know, I'll throw in my two cents. Um let's let them work it out.
Well, but that's.
Because there's no need to write a check for a hundred and six thousand if three days later they show the bills. That's ridiculous.
I get that, but that's the demand that came from, from Tony, so unless the.
Well, that's why we're talking about it.
Yes.
To amend it.
So either we.
Well, I would recommend we amend the demand letter if that's what's required.
What I would suggest is that we leave it out there, because to amend it would.
Okay.
Again, right now, that they're saying that the district is not entitled to return of the full one thirty-six. We're saying we'd like to have it all back while we do all the accounting and review and then make a determination whether or not it's appropriate to reimburse them for that one thirty-six. And so they returned thirty thousand. We again made the demand for the balance of one oh six. I'd suggest that, again, maintain the process, it's leave the demand out there, but maintain the process of we expect to get documents by July 17th.
Okay.
And then we'll meet on July thirty-first.
I'm telling them that.
And then if we come to a stalemate or initially we come back to the board, if we have a resolution, we come back to the board.
Correct.
That's what I would suggest.
That, and and from a, from a staff perspective, that's what I would expect, because we have a process in place. That was adopted by the board and agreed upon by both parties, that a reimbursement request is required. And so we should stick with the policy that's in place. They return the public funds and provide proof of those expenses. And to me, it's a, a wire transfer is a wire transfer, but they're district funds until they can prove otherwise.
To, to what extent the fact that, did this occur under a different management company?
Yes. Yes, that was done during by Castle and Castle's.
To what extent are they uh talking of what they know about this? Are they gonna be involved in this?
Well, that's up to PPCA to do that. That's a problem between them and Castle and KW.
Well, what I'm starting to get to is, does somebody know what's going on? Cause it sounds like.
Yeah.
Players.
They, it, it could be something as simple as I thought that was a GSDD asset, but it turns out it's something else. It could be something as simple as that and they just binned it in the wrong part. Let's let the process work out. You know, I don't think there's anything nefarious.
Why do I feel like, why do I feel like there's something I just don't know?
Well, you don't know, I don't know any more than you know. I I'm just saying.
And I don't know any more than you.
But nobody's fighting it, by the way. We're working cooperatively to get to the deliberation.
This whole process should have never ever happened.
Well, we all agree with that, yeah.
I can say the three years that I have been here, at least from what I've seen so far, and that may change. Uh there have not, this has not, it hasn't happened that I've seen, but again, I haven't been able to go pass, back past October of twenty-two. Because we requested the finance or the bank statements prior to that for the three years and they, we have not received them yet. I made that request back.
The point, the point in bringing this in front of you all is this is, from an administrative standpoint, something that we're working through with Tony and with the community association. We're hoping for a positive resolution and we'll bring it back to you guys at the first meeting in August.
And nobody's heard anything that it won't be a positive resolution.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it says it's informational only at this point. I mean, it's, it's not like it's a small amount of money, so that was why we brought it. I mean, if it was, you know, I shouldn't say only two or three thousand dollars, it would have been something I just would have put in my report, but this is, it's kind of a big deal, so.
Alright, so approval of minutes?
I move to approve the June first Board Supervisor.
You can approve them all at once.
Minutes. Well, anyway, I have moved to approve the minutes of A, B, C and D.
I have a motion and I have a second, on favor?
Aye. Aye.
Who seconded, I'm sorry?
She goes from here to here.
Yes.
It's all adapting.
Reel it in.
Do it all.
Okay, consent agenda items.
As in this strategic plan, does anybody, I tried to Google and find out more about these peoples, anybody know?
Chelsea can answer that question. This is someone that she brought. She has experience with them.
I was trying to find out.
Laura, can you turn agenda item?
I'm getting there, hang on.
So Ed, I I have used Laura Kibbe um at the beach. Um she did the strategic plan for the town council at Fort Myers Beach. She did some of my advisory committee um strategic action plans at the beach. Um she's well-accomplished in her field. Um you can follow, you can find her on LinkedIn. She's a one-woman show. Um and she's very personable. I, I highly recommend her, but if you guys have somebody else that you'd like to recommend, I'd be more than happy to reach out and get a quote from them.
I don't have anybody else. I was just, didn't know anything about her and so I tried to Google it to find out who other clients were and that type of thing, just to see what they had to say. But couldn't find anybody.
Yeah, I didn't remember that we even tried to get a facilitator to do strategic action.
That's what we talked about the last meeting.
We, we talked about it also during the um evaluation.
Yeah.
Doug, Doug, what do you call it? You call it um?
Facility.
Advance, a board, um.
Uh board, well, we used to call it a board advance. Um or it could be a vision meeting or future planning meeting, whatever.
This is.
Kind of like what we did over.
This is a little bit more detailed than what we've done before.
Yeah.
How about ever?
Which may not.
Let's just call it forever.
We, we tried to do something like this years ago with um.
Joe DeCirbo.
Yeah, with Joe. So I think getting, which I liked, I like building a plan and having someone lead it. Cause it keeps us on task and it allows staff to participate uh as opposed to facilitating.
It's gonna blow up my budget when you pay me for these.
Yeah.
I move to approve the contract with Laura Kibbe Leadership Solutions.
Did you wanna, hang on, do you wanna just, normally the consent agenda items all get approved at one time. That's why we put them under there.
Yeah, you can do all those.
Alright, so then.
Good try, Carol.
Alright, so then we have the uh easement acceptance with the Hampton Park Association. We just had Will here and we worked it all out. I don't know if you guys have any questions? And then the series two twenty, twenty-three, one and twenty, twenty-three, two bond dispersment request.
I have no, no issues with that.
Just question the easement acceptance, it, it is done?
It's done, they signed, they're, I'm just waiting for Flavia.
It wasn't attached here, I didn't see any document.
I have all of it, I just need Flavia to sign it.
So, so they signed them, um they approved them at one of their board meetings. Um after the fact, we got a note from their cam, who ha- I guess had followed up with their attorney about something. And so the, just small nits with some of the language, which is why in the requested motion, it is contingent upon district council's approval. Um and so they, we have the signed copies from them, so it's a matter of you, you all accepting them pending Tony's final review and then we'll get them recorded.
And for the record, I prepared them all and uh assuming there are no other changes and the signatures are all fine, I think that's what Chelsea's indicating as part of the, my final review.
Yes.
So you had any chance to review them yet?
No, I'm not. It's been interesting two weeks.
So we're, wait for vote.
So I'll make a motion, we accept to consent agenda items pending the attorney's final review.
A through C. A through C.
Yes, exactly.
Do I have a motion in a second, on favor?
Aye.
District engineer Tetra Tech task authorization. Is anybody online?
I, I. Oh, okay, Stephen.
No, you're go, go ahead, Chelsea. This is Stephen Agapi with Tetra Tech. I, I am on the line.
Okay, so this is kind of what I alluded to earlier. So this funding uh was put in the bond. So this, the funding for this task authorization is already covered for in the bond. And in talking with Tetra Tech and looking at um how we can best utilize district dollars. We had Stephen pulled up the, that old RV park storage um plan set and then we have. And then we have the utilities building, um, task authorization that we're almost through permitting. So we essentially want to merge those two design elements together and put it towards the back end of the soccer complex for a, a, a maintenance building. That would be kind of near the wells. That way we could, um, fence off the building and those wells. Uh, and then the rest would remain as a, a additional parking for the soccer complex. So that's what this task authorization. And Stephen, chime in if I missed anything.
Chelsea, is this both a public works and, uh, a utility building or just public works?
It would be just public works.
Because utilities will have theirs out here.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
Okay.
Um.
I just wanted location. I don't know where their wells are back there.
It's, it's like way back behind the dog park in the corner. It's underwater most of the summers, which that's, will also help us out because, um, we, it's very hard to get back there even with a gator in the summertime when the rain starts coming in.
Is this, was this, was this property underwater when we had that issue?
So that's why I wanted to know.
Timber Creek? Was this property?
Part of it?
Yes.
I believe so. And then I think that was part of, I know, I, I can't speak for Stephen and Chelsea because I haven't been part of these conversations, but I know that that was something that Kenny was concerned about.
Let, let me try mine. Look, so as part of this task authorization, it would require us going to South Florida Water Management District for permits. We would have to elevate that site, which is not news to anybody here. Um, and, and that was accounted for in those original RV designs. We would have to account for the stormwater drainage and show that on our plans. So this was the turnkey proposal for design. To, to get the ball rolling for, for that.
Yeah, Stephen, Stephen, don't, don't, don't send that drainage water east because it'll come back at it twice as much.
Ten-four.
I don't, we, we, we had a discussion on this a long, long time ago. This is five, six years ago of use, utilizing that property. And we went back there and looked at it and drainage at that time was an issue and we really never had an answer of where to take it. Uh, one time we were looking at piping it out of there and taking it west. But, uh, if we're elevating the building, that, at least that makes sense and somewhat protects us then.
Well, and I know we're.
Ed, you're talking about like.
I know we're not to the point of where we're talking about. So this is an authorization to allow them to do what preliminary design?
No, this will take it through a hundred percent through, through construction, limited construction. So, and again, just like we did with the admin building at thirty, sixty, ninety percent design, we would bring that back to you all for your review and any comments.
So my input would be. Let's, as we're building this, let's look out for our needs for the next ten years, you know, potentially. If it's, you know, um, what do we need under roof? What do we need for equipment storage? Um, another area that is of concern is just storage for the, for the park facility. Um, so just think holistically when you're.
Okay.
Chelsea, describe exactly where on the property this is. Is it in the northeast corner?
Yes.
That's what I thought. It's, there's trees and stuff back in that corner.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to see. So here's the dog park. And then here's the area. So I want to know where exactly this building will be here.
There's, there's an existing well back there in the, the lower Hawthorne well that we, uh, denied the bid. There would be a second lower Hawthorne well drilled back there and the building would be like tucked in that back corner of the parcel. Near those wells.
Right. We are, sorry. We are right.
Hey, Chelsea, I'm sending you a text of a picture that we're looking at.
We are here, but if you look at this, so I, well, I think this is right here. Right here is a pile of debris from the land, uh, from the lake bank restoration, like riprap and old stuff, concrete.
This is all, all Mount Schumacher.
Okay, so the picture that you guys are looking at.
That is, so.
That's what they call it.
So are we up against the corner of our property?
Yes.
Timber Ridge or with the conservation easement?
They, Tetra Tech has to look and see which, well, we have to look at the well design because I don't know if the well was to the west or to the south of the existing. But it, it would be in that, it'd be tucked back in that corner.
That's where I thought it was.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, it's back here.
See, that map you've got isn't.
This is the well right here. Okay, so the corner, corner is right there. Yep, that's the well.
It'll be back in this area back here. And this, I said, this is pretty much underwater during the entire rainy season.
Stephen, did you have anything else to add?
So, so what is this canopy loop here? What is that?
That's the new development.
Oh, that's not ours.
That's not ours.
No.
That's.
No.
That's Timber Creek.
Timber Creek.
Here.
Timber Creek.
There.
And then what is the, see where the D is on the top of the screen there? Going down from that, what is that?
Oh, that's.
Looks like a construction.
This is not ours. Yeah. That's all Timber Creek.
No, Chelsea, I don't have anything to add.
Which.
Do you want?
Yes.
So it's back in this corner right here.
Our property line is, uh, straight down from that, uh, well.
It gets right here. You can see.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Oh, okay. She's saying it's right here.
It's like right here.
So, and again, we'll, we'll bring back, if, if this gets approved, we'll, you know, when we get to thirty percent design, we'll bring it back to you, to you for your review and consideration. Any edits or tweaks to be made.
You can see here.
Good, good, good. What do we need a motion to?
Approve the task authorization, please.
Okay, so is this that eight hundred thousand that I was asking about or is that?
No, ma'am.
No.
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 No, that's pole barn, that goes out here.
Okay.
Pole barn here.
Which one?
The eight hundred thousand is for the utilities.
That's the utility.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I'd make the motion to approve the, uh, Tetra Tech task authorization for the, uh, public works maintenance building.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second on favor?
Hi.
All right, I'll get that P O done. And then Timber Creek Drainage Draft Technical Memorandum, so.
So this, uh, Stephen presented this at your guys' last meeting. Um, and we wanted to provide you the actual, the official report for your review, um, in any direction that you wanted us to proceed with. I know that there was some, um, some direction given, but, uh, this is for a more formal process. So does anybody have any questions for Stephen?
Say, say that again. You, you, you came through muddled there.
Sorry.
What are you saying to do?
This is the, the formal review of the Timber Creek, uh, analysis that Tetra Tech had performed. And if there's any direction, if you'd like us to proceed. I know at the last meeting you get, you gave Stephen some direction. Um, but if there was given the opportunity for you all and the public to read the technical memorandum and provide any feedback or direction.
Question, yes, I got a couple. One, uh, why would we not be able to get ASBILs to base this on who, who's not, they got to furnish ASBILs. Why, what are we missing here? It implied that we'd have a much more accurate report if we had ASBILs instead of the bounds.
Agreed, and that was one of the direction that was given to Tetra Tech at the last board meeting. And I believe, Stephen, you guys are working on that, correct?
So, um, we can verify the ASBIL information, you know, resembles as far as like the invert elevations match what their design was. Um, as far as like getting contours from, you know, their entire site. Um, it's kind of, it makes the model a lot larger and can make it kind of cumbersome and, um, less practical. But one of the things we can do is, is look at record drawings and compare it to, um, like further structures, the control structures. Look at those invert elevations and confirm they match what we had input into the design.
Okay, Stephen, I, uh, from our discussion at the last meeting, I brought in tonight, the nineteen ninety-three Johnson Plan. And the water that we agreed to in that nineteen ninety-three report from Johnson, uh, was indeed is thirty. God, ever since we began meeting, I already forgot it. Uh, it was thirty-two or thirty-six CFS. And it was coming at that location. My question is, yeah, here it is. Thirty-two CFSes, we had planned in the nineteen ninety-three water management plan for Gateway. Is there a way to determine? That the thirty-two CFS has been or has not been exceeded?
Yeah, um, James is on the phone too. That might be a more technical question for him, but do you know if there was a storm event associated with that flow rate they were allotted?
I didn't, say it again?
Do you know if there was a design storm event associated with that CFS? Or was it just, that's the maximum CFS they're allowed?
I, I'll have to dig into the report, but I, as I recall reading it before, yes, there was.
Yeah, there would have to be. This is James Warner on, on phone. There, there would have to be some kind of, of information behind what that thirty-two is associated with. How to test that against the real world gets very complicated. Um, if we, we'd have to have some kind of flow, um, monitoring station specifically placed at the point where you, that, that flow was allowed. Those aren't really cheap, uh, analysis programs and they, they tend, tend to be run by government agencies because they are so expensive and very difficult to get to. So getting down to that nitty gritty of a level is going to be very, either very cost, not very cost effective. Um, and it really won't give us much more information than what we already have coming forward.
Steve, do you have a copy of this ninety-three Johnson report?
Um, I'm sure we have it somewhere buried in our, our archives, but I'd be more than happy to take a copy of it if you have a digital copy you can forward me to look at.
Digital.
If you have. I can scan it in. I can scan it in.
Came across on the Mayflower. Uh, yeah, I'll have, uh, give it to Laura. Uh, I'm looking through it here real quick, but I'm just bringing it up. Yeah, that's essentially what I'm looking at on this.
Yeah, this is in the South Florida permit for Timber Creek.
I just want to make sure that we're not taking more than we were required to take per that water management plan. That, to my knowledge, has never been updated since ninety-three. They did the original report in eighty-six, eighty-seven, then they did the amendment to it. And then they made recommendations that it should be updated every five years. Never happened. I just want to make sure we're not taking any more water from that area than, uh, we absolutely have to. But I don't know how we check that out. That water has got to be, if it was coming the right way into our community, where there would be some way that we can measure it going across an area. While it might be crude as hell, we might be able to do it. But with that water scattering out and going, coming into Gateway all the way from north to south, there's no way to know how much water is coming across.
Ed, did you visit the site when the water, when we had the issue? When you saw the water coming in during the hurricane?
No, well, I saw the water, the hurricane before, but that was before Timber Creek was even being done. This is all, uh, subsequent to that and I have no idea. I, I can understand the difficulty of this, uh, uh, calculation. Not having ASBIL drawings or having not, knowledge that the drawings that you got and the information you're using is accurate makes it even worse.
I mean, just to me, the amount of water, it was.
It's a lot.
It was significant. I mean, it was almost a foot of water down here by, by the last parking lot.
Well, one of the, one of the findings here that I, as I recall, you were making was is that we might want to consider more storage. Are you talking about more storage on our property? In your conclusions?
James, do you mind addressing that one?
I thought I read something that you were suggesting that it, it almost sounded like unless something changes, what you've given us in this report is about as good as we're going to get at this point. And that it is not showing anything that they have done wrong. Is, am I, am I saying?
In a nutshell, that's not exactly wrong. It's, it, it is basically what we're finding with our model analysis. The pre-development condition there, we were finding some flooding in that area, but it took a lot of, of water, rainfall to make that to happen in our model. Then, when we post-development after Timber Creek, uh, information was put into the model, uh, we were getting basically the la, same level of, of flooding in the model at the same, uh, about the same timeframes in the, in rainfall. So.
Them do to make them come in where we want it to come in, not where it came in. It just seems to me that one of our obvious deals were, we saw this under Irma. We saw a massive amount of water coming from the east, going west, right across our common line, all the way up the north, south, uh, line of the east side of Gateway. I mean, it was pouring across. One obvious answer is we go out and we create a wall, a berm. Make it two foot high, all the way to full length of Gateway.
That, that is something you could do, but I don't know that you could do that legally. Um, that becomes, uh, water flows up both sides of, of, of a wall. So it, it gets, it gets a little bit more complicated than just don't let the water come across my line.
How do we legally make them put the water where the, uh, water management plan says it was going to go?
I don't see, at, at least on the information we have, we don't have it, we don't have any information of that water coming across or, or any way of proving that in any models that we have right now. That identify that water is crossing someplace other than, uh, where we, we've got it, uh, in the model right now. I don't have a way of calibrating the model to that level to determine, you know, on a, on a real world topography versus a model topography. We're not, we're not showing water coming or going across any lines that would affect, uh, or, or that we could, we could change based on our model right now. And a model is not the real world and the real wa, real world is not a model. We tried to emulate the mod, emulate the real world as closely as we possibly can. Um, what we, we kind of don't have right now that is difficult to ascertain is what the, whether our model is one hundred percent right on the mark with what's actually happening in the real world. Uh, we, we haven't gone, at least that I can find, any real calibration where we've run an exact same amount of rainfall across the basin. And just know that our limited basin really is, it's hard to do that. Even if we had thousands and thousands of acres, there are, are influences that come in and out from different, uh, conditions. So, um, our model has been updated and, and, and re-verified and, and everything as we go forward. But we're not, we don't have a, a true calibration set to the real world on this right now. We've got a model run. We run the model based on that. We, we, we're making assumptions that they will emulate what happens in the real world.
So we don't have any pictures, historical pictures that were showing water flow that was showing the water going the wrong direction? I thought, I thought we did. I thought we had.
Anecdotal data of, of, uh, opportunities where somebody has captured the water going in a, a different direction at certain points, uh, along the line. But we don't have all of the background information to determine what occurred to make that happen. Uh, we don't have all of the rainfall events exact to that, that point. We've done our best to try to, to find those, those, those calculated, uh, rainfall events from the, the water treatment plant and, and all of that. But they don't correlate one hundred percent with what we're, what was seen in the real world. So water going in the wrong direction, we don't have, other than those anecdotal data.
There's nothing we can do?
No, to summarize, let, let me summarize real quick. The modeling is inconclusive, period. They can't, now, if you recall at the last meeting, Stephen told you all that, um, when that event occurred and there was a break in the, in the berm. Um, we did notify South Florida and South Florida did, you know, put, lay a hammer down on Timber Creek, that they needed to make some necessary adjustments. Knock on wood, we, we haven't seen, I, I believe we had maybe some, we had some flooding from Ian, but, um, knock on wood, we haven't seen what we saw during that storm event. Um, direction from the board at the last meeting was try to obtain the ASBILs from the Timber Creek community and see if we could plug those in and see what, if anything, was done. So it, I mean, and if that's still, still the direction, we can continue to proceed. Uh, but what I, what I told Tetra Tech is, um, give us some solutions, you know? What, what, if anything, could we do? And that's where James and, and Tim have, and Stephen have come up with, all right, if, if we do anticipate additional flooding. Exbits could include, you know, additional capacity at the pond at the front of the soccer complex, you know, putting pipe in ground, like you said, Ed, that was considered however many years ago. Um, there are options, but at what point is it a cost benefit? You know, are we putting, spending, you know, lots of money for a one or two time event? But if we're, if we're taking on water we shouldn't be, then that's something we have to proceed. But if we're if we're taking on water, we shouldn't be, then that's something we have to proceed with South Florida Water Management District.
I believe the water was coming this way.
It broke the it broke the berm during that one rain event. I think it was in like January. Um, and we have pictures and evidence of that. Um, but like I said, South Florida was did come down on on the contractor with Timber Creek to make some
My question is, where is the location that you were talking about that the berm was that you know that was broken? Behind Bristol Park? Behind Cypress K?
No, at the at the back of the soccer complex.
Okay, so I mentioned at the last meeting because behind Bristol Park, right between Bristol Park and Cypress Gate, there was an issue there too, that the water was coming over that burn there.
That's where the water came in Irma, big time, big time.
So so it wasn't in a so it's in addition to what you're you you looked at it. But at those areas, I want to know if anybody went back there and and assessed that. And I know something happened because there was a it's a wetland there, and I know Timber Creek was doing mitigation because they were planting a ton of stuff there, but there's where I personally saw water just going totally over the barn.
Well, the the issue is the water management plan makes it clear that water that's coming off Timber Creek is to come into Gateway via Basin Five, period. If it comes in anywhere north of that wastewater wastewater treatment plant parallel, it isn't in Basin Five anymore. It's in Basin Four. And that's not or three or four. That's not correct. That's wrong. That water is supposed to go across the Worthington property, period. And if it's coming in any place else, something's wrong, and we've got to get with South Florida and show them that. Again, learned up north, good way of doing that. They call them berms. We'll make the water go that direction.
So we'll we will follow up with the developer of Timber Creek and see if we can get those as built now that we, I mean, we have the two locations that we know for a fact. Um, Flavia mentioned one, and then we we have where L um identified another one by the soccer complex. Um, so if we can get their as built and and maybe James can throw those into the model and we can come back to you all with our findings.
Just spot check a couple of uh probably ten or fifteen locations throughout your your model that you'll know real quick, like if there was a variation that was significant. If it's not, we're chasing the wrong goose. We gotta we gotta switch back to something else.
Yeah, I know. Stephen, you guys did some spot checks on those pipes that cut across Worthington, right?
We did, yeah. Those checked out.
So we've got some other spot checks we need to perform.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah.
I got one for Stephen.
Next time we see a big rain gully washer coming, guarantee I'm getting to my boots and my umbrella and gonna be heading out and walking the uh walking that line there and see where that water is coming across.
I'll make sure there, Ed.
The thing is, like, the rain event that supposedly occurred to cause that flooding was only like it wasn't like a it was a big rain event. I mean, it was like three to five inches of rain, if I recall correctly, so um, it was a good rain event, but it wasn't like astronomical. Um, so I'm sure Gateway has seen, you know, some two plus inch rain events already, two, three inch rain events. Um, more to come.
The one that was preceding Irma, that one was about eight to ten inches of rain, and it it was horrible. Bristol Park, Cypress K, those areas were just having water pour across the Timber Creek line. Uh, and in fact, the uh the the people up there were hiring guys with backos to try to come in and push dirt up against the Timber Creek to stop the water from flooding across.
Do you see it right here, Ed? So this is immediately after the hurricane. So that's the area. That's the area that I know for a fact the water just came over. It came over this way, and then it came over right here.
Yep, two locations. I agree.
You see it? It broke and all this water during it was, this is totally flooded.
Well, we can, we know, I think we know enough to where to go to look and next time it comes to find out uh positively if it's coming from them, because there I begged those people five years ago to take that water and run it across half of it up across Magnolia Lake and bring it into Magnolia uh where Flavia lives and supplement that with water, and they wouldn't do it.
So Flavia, Flavia, can you send Stephen and myself those pictures um that you've shown, Ed?
It's 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 the picture that was taken immediately after two thousand and seventeen, so I think it's two thousand seventeen dash nine. But I'll 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 take a screenshot and send it to you.
Okay, perfect.
And I'll mark the locations that I recall.
Thank you. All right, well, we've got some homework to do with this still, but we wanted to get the report to you all so you had a chance to review it and read it, provide any comments.
Thanks, James. Thank you. Bob, you had a question for me?
Yes, and I just had one is, has there been any progress on the uh Prato downspout and drainage issues?
Chelsea forwarded our um email or our memo uh to Alex find Bob with Lennar, so it's in their court right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're all done with the district engineer. Admin agenda items. So capital reserves thirty.
Yep, so we have um Brandon, who is the one who put together the majority of this um study. He's on the call here for a brief presentation, and then if you guys have any questions about the report, um, you'll be able to ask him directly.
Do you want me to share my screen, Chelsea?
Please.
Laura, do you want him to share or do you just want to run through it? That works. Go ahead, Brandon. You can share it.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. It's nice to talk with you all. Uh, my name is Brandon Vatter with uh Raftellus Consultants. Um, Chelsea and her folks asked us to take a look at uh the enterprise fund and provide some recommendations for the amount of capital reserves that should be uh uh kept with the fund um to to meet best utility practices. So that's what we're going to talk about today. Um, our scope of work was to review and determine for the water supply sanitary sewer and reclaimed water reuse system. Uh, how much capital reserve should be held within that enterprise fund? Um, the goal was to then determine your current level of asset management within uh those utilities um to address proactive and reactive renewal of Gateways uh utility assets. And then based on that, um, provide a recommendation on the amount of capital reserves that should be should be held for emergencies or unexpected uh failures and and the associated repairs. Uh, just a little background for those of you that that don't have the numbers in your head. There's about three hundred and thirty five thousand linear feet of water mains. Uh, over twelve hundred valves and almost six hundred hydrants. On the wastewater side, there's twenty nine pump stations, about two hundred and thirty five thousand linear feet of gravity sewer and manholes, about ninety four thousand feet of force mains and about a hundred and fifty valves and twenty air release valves. And for the irrigation system, there's about two hundred and eighty two thousand feet of pipe, uh, four hundred and sixty seven valves and and six supply pumps, along with one two million gallon storage tank.
Now, just for clarity, that irrigation line uh uh analysis of mains, that is not inclusive of our actual sprinkling system, is it? In other words, the one and a half inch pipe, the two inch pipe, the all of the heads, all of that, those come off of those mains that make up the two hundred and eighty two thousand. Is that correct? In other words, the whole water distribution, irrigation distribution system, the network, the controllers, none of that is in this. Is that correct?
Uh, that may be uh a question for Austin. I believe the two hundred and eighty two thousand feet includes the small diameter pipe and those control valves.
Austin is here.
Confirm.
Because the amount of water line you got in the water, because the irrigation line and the water line basically parallel in almost all the community. And so the and the air or the water doesn't have that type of a system. So the the fact that these two totals are very, very similar tells me that it is not inclusive of our regular irrigation system, the one and a half, one inch, two inch small diameter pipe, everything behind the meter.
Austin Manoli, Gateway Services District. And yeah, that's correct. That figure for the irrigation lines just includes all the distribution system on our side, on the district side.
We could have another two or three easily million dollars or more in the irrigation system to deliver the water to the grass.
Possibly, yes.
So we can know that that's that's still something we got. We're going to see it when we go to pay a couple of million bucks for the irrigation controllers, which is totally separate from what uh you guys are presenting to us. Just trying to point out here that there's another component that we need to worry about.
Sure. Good point. Thanks for clarifying that, Austin. Um, so this is a common question during rate studies. What's the appropriate and justified amount of capital reserves or repair and replacement funds to have available in any given year? Obviously, too little and unexpected asset failures or repairs can't be sufficiently funded and addressed. Too much and and the money's not spent timely and and rates could be increased more than necessary. So really, the the answer boils down to to two key points, the maturity level of the utilities asset management program. And what I mean by asset management is the the costs associated with operating, maintaining uh the existing assets that are already in the ground. How are they being uh repaired and replaced on a regular basis and what's being budgeted uh for that ongoing uh uh asset management uh separate from new construction? So what we're focusing on here is the existing assets that are already in the ground um and the associated budgets to operate and maintain those properly. And obviously, if the assets are in good condition and and your asset management program is mature, then lower amounts of reserves can be justified. Um, obviously, the opposite is true. Then if the utilities are in poor condition, a a significant risk of asset failure exists, then sufficient funding is really needed, both in the capital reserve and in the overall uh capital budget for emergency as well as prioritized asset renewal and replacement. So we performed a detailed review of Gateway's past asset renewal budgets, uh your past expenditures, the age of the assets, uh materials. Um, example there, table six from the report is is shown on the graphic. Uh, this shows the various uh budgets that you all have included for different asset renewal and maintenance and repairs. Um, and then what was spent in fiscal year twenty two. Um, so you can see that, you know, you all are budgeting adequately uh based on the actual expenditures. So we we found sort of key three, I'm sorry, six key points uh from our detailed review, and and I'll just walk through those with you. First, um Gateway has been improving their their program for the water sewer and irrigation assets over the last three years. You all have made significant strides improving your asset management program. Uh, the asset repair, maintenance and replacement budgets uh included in the enterprise fund have been sufficient uh to fund annual reactive and proactive asset renewal and maintenance. So that's that's a really good thing. And the twenty nine pump stations that you have in the wastewater system are prioritized in budgets, budgeted to be renewed and replaced, and and those budgets are reviewed annually and updated to make sure that the the pump stations are are being uh renewed and and uh maintained properly. In addition, uh, we found that there's been relatively few breaks over the last three years on the water sewer and irrigation linear assets. It's been primarily from uh other utilities hitting the pipelines and not necessarily um large failures. The uh fiscal year twenty four budget includes proactive asset renewal and replacement budgets within the enterprise fund. Um, so you all are continuing to budget for ongoing asset renewal and maintenance um at the amounts that that appear to be sufficient. And then we we took a look at your overall asset management practices and compared those against industry standards, uh what's called ISO fifty five thousand and one best practices. Um, and Gateway was found to be at the at the developing maturity level, and and I'll show you what that means here in a second. And that's really a significant accomplishment. I really I really like to to praise staff and the board on their work and their investment in that. Um, a lot of utilities uh would love to be in your position, frankly. Um, so you should be very proud of the work to date with building and developing your asset management program. So this is a a figure from ISO fifty five thousand and one. You can see that there's six levels all the way from from innocent up to excellent. Um, and you are are sort of right there in the middle of developing. Um, and that work continues. I know you're you're implementing additional practices to continue to build your program and and be proactive. Uh, we did identify ten recommendations uh in section five of the report to help you further advance your asset management program and and move towards the the competent and and optimizing levels. Uh, this slide summarizes the amount of capital reserves that are are currently held um within the maintenance and capital programs. There's about one point one five million dollars currently available in reserves for for unexpected or emergency failures. Uh, that represents about twenty three percent of the FY twenty three budget and about fourteen percent of the proposed FY twenty four budget. Um, section six A of our report, and and I'm happy to talk through further details if you'd like, describes the the various utility best practices, what others are doing across the industry to to budget for capital reserves, how those numbers are calculated. Um, and what we found was maintaining fourteen percent are pretty much where you are now in the enterprise fund, uh one point one five million for fiscal year twenty four appears appropriate and consistent with utility best practices.
So Brandon, can I chime in quick? So I just want to be clear with the board because Brandon was working through and staff. We were working together through this report before the board adopted its high watermark with budget. Um, and what was approved for the high watermark is not sufficient for the reserves of of what he just said of the fourteen percent. Um, and I think Stephen Bloom is still on the call. He he can tell you what we had proposed to put into reserves for next fiscal year. Uh, and we're short because we have capital projects that need to get done. As you all know, we had, we wanted to start saving for um uh system wide meter replacement. So we've had some unforeseen um items come up over the last fiscal year, but um as of right now with the approved high watermark, we are short for reserves.
Yeah, and this is Stephen, just to to piggyback on that. The the number right now that's in your your budget is a little bit under um twelve percent at um about eleven point seven percent.
So how much more do we need in dollars?
Beat me to it.
Give us the bad news.
To get it to the fourteen and a half.
Yeah.
To get it to the fourteen and a half, what do we need in dollars?
To get it to there, you would need, let's see here, a hundred and I'll round it, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars short.
Two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Now, when you're doing this, are you having these three utilities stand on their own? Are you blending them? We got a problem with that because we have different rates and charges for water and wastewater and irrigation. So uh is is one is one account clean and the other one not so clean or uh did you look at it that way or did you blend all of this? Because our rates don't allow blend.
Yeah, the numbers that the numbers that we were provided are on the screen here, um which appear to be blended across the the three utilities that, in other words, those funds could be used for an emergency or unexpected repair on on the water sewer or irrigation system.
Yeah, that's that's an issue because we have uh uh separate water utility, sewer utility and irrigation rates. Uh, and we've spent a lot of time the last several years putting those into proper categories and readjusting in our irrigation rates, which for years were subsidized by water and sewer, especially water, have now been brought up to speed and those rates went sky high, as people all know. Uh, when we go and do the new irrigation controller system, they're probably even going to go higher. But as a utility, each one of those, if you're showing so much money in capital reserves, how much of it goes into or did you look at that as to how much is in water, how much is in sewer, how much is in irrigation and how much more is needed in any one of those?
Well, Stephen, do we track those separately for reserves or does it just go into one pot?
It, it goes into one pot, but the calculation, uh, to your point is done, uh, on a, on each of the individual lines and then does get put into one pot. So that means that we have the ability, uh, to split it all out. Uh, that has just not been anything, it's not been something that we have ever quite gotten to, to be able to do. And a lot of that has to do just with timing of projects and, and how that all works. You know, you would basically be collecting money off of one service and then you'd still somehow, you'd still be short, um, if you do it that way. So it, it really has to be a overall, um, look at it. In order to do that, you're probably going to have to do some other adjustments in order to be able to, to account for projects.
We want to get out of that old time thinking because you got some people here that, uh, don't have a lot in irrigation, uh, and have them have their water bill or their sewer bill subsidized on somebody else's 50 acres of grass. That's, that's not fair. Sure as heck can, uh, reasonable. So we need to be looking at the, uh, splitting these apart. And if you're saying that we need another 180,000, which one was, is, you're going to have to get it out of one of the three accounts. So who, who picks up the tab? The irrigation side, the sewer side or the water? My deal is, is that we've got one hell of a lot of capital needs and upcoming capital needs on the wastewater side. Big time.
And Ed, that's, that's going to lead at the end of Brandon's presentation where we have requested, um, for them to do a, a rate study sooner than, than later, considering all of the anticipated projects and costs that we have forthcoming. So.
Okay. Couple of other things. Well, Brandon, have you done? Cause I had a couple of other questions relative to the report itself, cause you hit in on a couple of things that I totally agree with.
Yeah, I, I was just going to mention, um, this, this is the, the section in the report. Can you all see my screen? Okay.
Yeah.
That come back up? Okay, good. This is the section in the report where we talk about the different methods that, um, are, are followed for best practices for calculating reserves. So there's a few different ways to do it. And the, the range that is typically provided is somewhere between 5% to 25%. Again, depending on the maturity of your asset management program. So you all were, you know, the, the amount that was listed on that slide was about 14%. You're talking about 12%. You know, at this point, I don't think that's super critical. Uh, you know, I, I wouldn't make a strong recommendation to say y'all have to go find that, uh, extra $180,000 and put that in reserves. Um, you, you're well within the, the target range at 12%. I think the, the key point I would make is, um, taking a look at the recommendations, and this is really our, our second recommendation here, taking a look at the asset management program recommendations that we have and begin, uh, implementing those so that your program can become more mature. Um, you know, and then the whole point there was you could further reduce or refine that overall 14% reserve amount. So there's kind of two, two ways to look at this. You, either, you know, the, the first option is, is, is try to get that additional money. Um, you know, we could take a separate look at each, at each reserve fund and, and, you know, work to, to figure out where the $180,000 should come from. Or, um, you know, go ahead with the 12%, which is what we're, what we were discussing before. Um, just with an emphasis that these, the asset management program recommendations, you, you start to advance those over the next year or so.
Yeah, I, I think in the other one, I, as I bring up, brought up earlier, uh, somehow, some way on that irrigation side, we've got to feed you with the information that's not included in this, that it is critical because we're going to be doing it. And that's the irrigation controller system that could cost us two, two and a half million dollars. Uh, that's as a big a hit of anything that we've got in the next couple of years, uh, relative to capital needs. So somehow, some way that's got to be thrown into this picture. And then the, when you mentioned on page five of the report under section four, Gateway indicated they do not yet have an annual proactive program to monitor for leaks in the water mains, irrigation mains or sanitary sewer force mains. Well, the, the, the one, the, the one there that, uh, really bothers me is the water. We have water meters that, uh, the county, uh, bills us on. I would like to see us on a monthly basis, doing a, and I'm assuming you're using the term water loss here to know just exactly if we're billing, if the county is billing us for, uh, 2 million gallons of water a day and we're selling, uh, 1 million eight, I got, I got a, I got a problem. If we're selling 2 million two and we're buying 2 million, we'll just, we'll just, we'll just keep on going down the road on that one. Uh, but that's a serious deal. Uh, I have no idea. We, we, we never talked about it. What is our water loss? Is our water loss 10%, which would be great, which says we're operating really, really good. If it's 15%, starts climbing up into the twenties, we got a problem. So that's one issue brought up that I agree with. I, I've never seen that data.
Ed.
That data. Yes.
Les, but Leslie has that data that she, she tracks and we can get that included in the utilities next monthly report.
Okay. The next one that he had, and I did not understand, uh, Gateway indicated about 30% of the total length of systems being televised. Close, and I assume you're talking about closed circuit TV, uh, system there. Uh, I totally agree with that. We've got to get this sewer system because that's a, that's a vulnerable place that we are. Uh, these, these utilities, these pipes have 20, probably 25 to 30 years left if we go with normal service lives between 50 and 75. And we're not going to throw them out, dig them up and throw them away and put in a new one. That's not going to happen. We're going to repair and replace it as necessary. But the fact that we haven't done 70% of our system is a little scary. But what I'm asking you about, you got sewer lines are scheduled for routine cleaning based on historical blockage areas as a result of the CCTVT inspections. Currently Gateway has eight staff available to conduct pipeline condition assessments plus one additional yet unified utility. What, what are you talking about? We don't have anybody available to do that work. We don't even have the equipment to do that work. That's all subcontracted out. Wonder what, was there a reason you put that in there?
I think Austin's going to give you.
That lo, that one blows my mind.
So that was based on my understanding of the original data request that was sent. We were asked about our staffing levels, uh, when we gave that information to them, to Raftellus. We had five field operators, counter utility field supervisor on hand, no six. It was a lot of people.
But our crews is our jack of all trades. They do water one day, irrigation the next and sewer. They're, they're no more committed to being able to do sewer cleaning and televising as a man in the moon. We don't have the equipment to do it. We'd have to subcontract that.
Yeah, we do. All this work subcontracted.
Yeah.
That's right. And, and that was one of our recommendations under the asset management program was to, to go ahead and develop a schedule, uh, to get the rest of the sewers televised over the next five years. And then use that data to, to supplement any additional cleaning that needs to be done. Other, and with contracted staff or, you know, as, as you're, as you have folks available in-house.
They, they, you were asked earlier what it would take, that we need to get about 180,000 to get us up to, uh, a true definition of where we're at in the, uh, the, uh, planning. What would it take to get us up to a competitive level?
When you say competitive level, competitive for, for what? I'm sorry. You kind of broke up there at the end. Say that again.
Ted, you mean not competitive. You mean this?
Competent level. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, uh.
So what would it take to get us up?
Competent level. Um, actually let me just, uh, open up the report here and we can talk through that a little bit. So.
There was a tie. I couldn't figure it out.
Kyle, I'm, I'm, uh, sorry. I'm going to open your report on a separate screen. Yours is, comes up very small for us when I try to view.
Okay, sure.
What are you doing?
I'm going to open the report from this.
I'll just go off of your.
Just let me know which page to go to.
Oh, okay. Sure. Uh, I'm on page 20 of 25.
Of the report.
Right.
Yep. I can see your, yours on my little screen, but it doesn't come across here everywhere.
Okay. Yeah. So it's a further advanced Gateways Asset Management Program to those next maturity levels that you mentioned, competent and optimizing. Uh, these are the recommendations we had, um, to do that. So first one is developing risk exposure scores for all of your linear and facilities assets. That's determined from, um, your likelihood of failure, which is conditioned data that's available and the consequences of failure, what, what would happen if that particular asset failed. Um, so that's a calculation that's done, determines the relative risk of your assets. And then you begin to prioritize your, your monitoring, your inspection, your maintenance, renewal and replacement based on the assets with the highest risk scores. So that would be the first recommendation. Um, and then you mentioned this earlier, develop a proactive program to monitor leaks in the water mains, irrigation mains and the force mains. Um, like you said, over 50% of the Gateways water mains, um, are over 20 years old and about 30% are over 30 years old. So developing that pro, proactive program to monitor for leaks is a second recommendation. Uh, we just talked about clean, completing the CCTV inspection of the remaining sanitary sewers over the next five years. Uh, and then developing a water sewer and irrigation valve and hydrant exercising renewal and replacement program. So that way you're, you're keeping up on all those assets and you have a way to, to take a look at the condition of those, how well they're working and then being able to budget for replacement based on, based on actual data. Uh, and then recommendation five was to increase the utilization of Cartograph, GIS and automation. Cartograph is your computerized maintenance management software. Uh, and there's a number of sub-recommendations we have here to, to better, um, house the data, record, uh, the, the various asset data, condition data, cost data. Um, being able to automate next actions. So as you're collecting data on your assets from the field, um, not a lot of, of manual time is spent trying to make sense of that data. You, you can automate that with, through various ways to, to help then inform work orders and, and next actions for, for crews or contractors to, to perform on the assets. Um, on the pump stations and, and other critical equipment, uh, we'd recommend developing what's called reliability centered maintenance. And that's really just a fancy word for making sure that all of your ONM costs, preventive maintenance costs are captured in work orders and you're tracking your associated costs for, for operating and maintaining your, your critical assets, uh, within Cartograph or, or another database so that you can continue to, to monitor performance and use that data then to proactively rehabilitate or replace, you know, the wear components of your assets. For example, impellers, motors, valves, et cetera. Uh, and then you can also utilize that data to inform when it makes more sense to replace an asset versus, versus continuing to maintain it. Uh, the next recommendation would be develop and measure some key performance indicators. Um, so those help measure costs, measure work completed, response time to customers, reduction in repair and replacement costs over time, production in water loss, um, and any others that are specific to, to the goals, uh, of Gateway. So we just listed some examples here as, 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 uh, items to think through. And one of the benefits of this is you, obviously, right? You can't, you can't improve what you don't measure or track. So when you begin to measure and track, then you can identify opportunities to, to increase work activity efficiencies and, and help reduce overall costs. And the next recommendation was to, um, in parallel with, with those items to develop a asset management program, structure, framework and team. Really the, the key to asset management we found is involving all of the staff across the utility and making sure folks understand their roles and responsibilities, whether it's operations, human resources, accounting, uh, engineering, et cetera. Um, and there's some discussion on that in the report. And then go ahead and then documenting all of these practices and procedures in a plan. Um, and using that plan as a, a living, breathing tool, uh, not only for training new staff, but also to help report Gateway's annual KPIs, uh, ways they've identified to reduce costs, continuous improvements that have been implemented over the last year. So using this as a, as a document to, to, uh, educate both internal and external stakeholders. And then specifically developing a clear policy for when asset repairs and maintenance costs should be capitalized versus expensed. Um, typically the rule of thumb or best practice is, is if the work is extending the useful life of the asset versus just ongoing maintenance to allow that asset to achieve its original useful life, that can be considered a, a capital expense. Um, if the, if the work is just being done to maintain the asset so that it, you know, continues to, to last another 10 years or 20 years of its remaining useful life, then that would be considered an expense. That might've been a, a long-winded way. I apologize of, of answering your question of, of how to get to the, the next competency levels for the, the overall asset management program.
But it's more than just money.
Or. You, right. You, you, you know, there'd be some investment here obviously to do these things. Um, but as you can see, it's a lot of practices and procedures.
So just to review, um, this study that you did, this is like a first step in a rate analysis?
Well, this was, uh, to answer the specific question of what should be maintained in capital reserves and to give you an, an indication of your maturity level of your asset management program and specific recommendations for improvements. Um, Chelsea, I, I think you're, there is going to be a follow-on rate study separate from this.
Yep. So Carol, typically when you have a rate study, capital is considered and the board, since we did the general fund rate study, reserve study, the, the board said, hey, what, what are we doing on the enterprise fund side? Um, and so that's why we had Raftellus come in and, and do this presentation. So what it's, in summary, we're, we're close. We have some work to do. We could be financially, um, a little bit stronger on the reserve side, especially considering the projects that we all know to be coming down the pipeline, no pun intended. Um, but the, the rate, a, an updated rate study right now, if we kept on, on course, the next time we would do a rate study would be in two years. Um, I would recommend that we expedite that and do it sooner. Um, we did get a price from Raftellus to, to do an updated rate study. Um, and that will be coming in front of the board at your next meeting for your consideration.
Yeah. And the, and the other one too is, is again, we have got to get back to delineating out the water, the sewer and the irrigation, separate billings. That's a major item. We can't be subsidizing these anymore like we got into a habit doing years ago. And then it was just absolute sticker shock to the community when their irrigation bills went through the roof. And it's, it's got a real good chance of happening again. While we've got all these things and the stuff that you've got here, Brandon, are on point, uh, to a T, this leaving out the, uh, irrigation, two and a half, at least two and a half million dollars of cost is going to be a big, big ticket item. And then the other big ticket item is going to be our water meter issue. We're sitting here looking at very easily, very easily, six or seven million dollars in just those two things alone that are going to hit our utilities. And it's, and they're, they're both imminent.
Ed, the irrigation is, is covered in the, the bond. So we've got that funded already. Um, but the, the meters is, and potentially meter box replacement is, is going to be costly. So, um, but this gave us some really good, uh, policies and things that we need to work on with staff. Uh, we have such a small staff that everybody's touching everything anyway, it seems like. But, um, I think this gave us an idea of where we, where, where we sit currently with our capital reserves and, and know that we have some improvements to be made.
So Kate, um, Chelsea, is the recommendation you're going to bring back in two weeks going to cover all three items, all three areas that Ed is asking for?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions for Brandon with regards to the capital reserve study?
I don't.
No, it's very detailed. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. So the resolution, so item B, the resolution 2023 dash 27.
So to just explain, at the, at the last board meeting, the board gave direction to pursue any. So to just explain, at the, at the last board meeting, the board gave direction to pursue any and all grants that we could. Find or get our hands on. Uh, Lee County has what they call a joint little jo- joint local mitigation strategy. And long story short, projects must be on an approved. Mid local mitigation strategy list. At the county level. Before you can get state or federal funding. And so in order to, to get on, get projects on that list. We have to be a part of that joint local mitigation strategy. All of the other municipalities are part of it, some fire districts. Um, so by adopting this resolution, you're opening the door for mainly mitigation projects. So stormwater related or utility mitigation. Um, I think the district handful of years ago, um, in Pelican had gotten some mitigation dollars for the air raiders. But by approving this resolution, you open that door for us to apply to the county. And get projects on the list for future funding that may become available.
Does it cost us anything to do this resolution?
No.
No.
Nothing.
Motion to approve.
So just get, allows us. Get, allows us to get in line to beg.
Yeah.
Yes.
So moved.
All right. So we have a motion in a second on favor.
It gives you a cut.
Thank you.
You got a couple of very good thoughts. Yes.
Okay, water rates discussion.
So this is, I think, I believe, is Leslie there? Laura?
She's here. Yeah, she's here.
Okay, so this is anticipating the public hearing um, towards the end of the month or next month.
On the twentieth.
The twentieth. Uh, this is again, just for informational purposes only, this is reiterating what we've told you before. How it would be a pass through of the eight percent for potable only to our end users. Um, but if you have any questions, we have the official, the notice, I believe Tony went out for the news press for the public hearing.
If, once I get, once I see it, well, we have the final edits to the proof. And reason why it's the twentieth, we all, the board had scheduled for today, the sixth. But there's a separate little statue tucked away in the nooks and crannies of the Florida statute. I call it the trolls. The let's say trolls, stick these little things in there. And it says that if you're going to change utility rates, fees and charges. In addition to any other notice required by law. There needs to be a notice in the utility billing, using the utility billing process. And the next utility bills go out July fifteenth. And so we talked about various ways to adjust it. And this is the easiest way is to have the rates effective July twentieth. And that way, Leslie can explain the billing process and she can handle it. She's. A whiz at figuring out how to do the various calculations.
Yes, if the, if the rates become effective July twentieth, then it'll be reflective in the September bill that's released for the usage from July. To the end, to the beginning of September. Well, our first bill that from Lee County will be received in August.
It's for July usage?
Yeah. It's for July usage, but the rate becomes effective July twentieth. So there'll be one week. Where essentially I, we're going to make the system bill. Usage for one week under the current rate and then after July twentieth, the new rate.
And I applaud Leslie for coming up with that solution. So.
Yes, otherwise we would have to wait until November, December. To begin to see the difference.
So Chelsea, I'm assuming that you did not get any kind of a response to your letter to Lee County. Asking for um, the fact that we are a, what a wholesale purchaser or something like that. I don't know, bulk purser, whatever, whatever.
Sale right over their head.
I understand.
We got a, we got from Cecil, uh, Pendergrass, who's our um. Regional representative, a, he, he acknowledged it and brought it in front of the Board of County Commission. And they said, thank you, but we're still moving forward.
Okay. And there it is. Okay. Just wondering.
Too, too complacent.
Within the notice, we also included the new bulk rate. That we will implement in our fee schedule as well.
And, and that, that is so um. If and when this interlocal goes through with FGUA, we don't have to go through this process again.
Or if we go into something with another, not FGUA, some other bulk, it's there. Yep.
So do you, do you need a motion?
Yes, the motion would be to adopt, well, do we need a motion for this?
No, no, this is.
No, it's just information.
Okay.
Thank you, Leslie. All right, I got it. Fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget discussion.
Again.
Okay, yeah, I had some questions.
All right.
I feel like you. I went back to the, I kept it open on the other page. This is where we left off. If I remember correctly. We had brought up, I have a note about the Pelican to move the board lock parking.
Uh, my first question was on. Uh, page eight. Which is uh, had, uh, the heading is fiscal year twenty twenty-four operating budget, general fund oh one. And it's under the revenues. The soccer park usage. And I see that we're anticipating it's going to go up twenty thousand dollars. Is that because of the rates?
Okay, I can't, sorry, I can't line up with your pages. If I go to page eight, I either have this.
What's, what's page eight look like?
Or.
Carol. What's the safety code? General fund.
Six.
Yes. General fund oh oh one. It's, it's where the general fund starts.
It's actually on budget page seven.
Yeah, seven online.
Okay.
Okay. Your dog, what'd you say?
So the revenues, the third line item, the soccer park use.
Right here.
And we're anticipating that we're going, it's going to go up twenty thousand. Was that based on more usage or was that based on the new rates?
That's based on the new rates because we had um, some of the leagues had actually grandfathered in under the rates. They didn't get the increase that was done for fiscal twenty-three, but they'll be getting, so they like missed an increase. So they're getting a big increase.
Okay, so. Are we at capacity?
We're beyond capacity.
We're beyond.
Oh, yeah.
So trying to get more people to use it isn't going.
The fields are, are very overused right now, but um. Yeah, I mean, we could get more people, but the more people that are on, the more wear and tear we have, which means we have more maintenance expenses. So yeah, we are way over the hours that they recommend using on that field.
Are you trying to figure a way to get more money?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's revenue.
I mean, the challenging piece is. We've got. We have a facility that's used.
Used.
But what, no, or.
The time frame.
There's only like, almost like four hours of the day.
Yeah.
So. Um, but there, you know, there's some opportunity.
There is.
The summer's a great time to, 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 to incur revenue, but we always seem to be doing maintenance.
There's, there's some ways that we can have other programs over there that are not soccer and that would not be as hard on the turf. Like if we could get somebody to do like yoga or do tai chi or something like that, where they're taking advantage of the space. But they're not putting wear and tear on the fields, you know, things like that, where we would have revenue.
To me, where the focus is, we need to have. Someone on staff who's responsible for parks and rec and part of their job is to drive revenue, drive quality. Uh, of service and experience. We've never had anyone that's dedicated to creating programs. Creating opportunities and driving revenue. Never.
Doug, that is what I see as for the Park and Rec manager. And that's the expectation over the next year is to incorporate programming.
And I'll caveat that, that is something that Chelsea has, has talked about driving. A position that's not only about increasing quality of programs, but having someone dedicated to doing that.
And I think uh, that's also, we talked about the sponsorship. That's something that Randy's working on. So if they specifically want to sponsor something at the soccer field, that money will go there as well.
Correct.
Well, I mean, there's. Uh, facilities in Lee County is, is scarce. You know, we're not Collier County where we're spending millions and millions and millions of dollars on sports complex.
Yeah.
And in those sports complex, they primarily only allow tournaments. Uh, to participate because that's where your revenue is. But there is some opportunities to, to do tournaments and things that would, would bring additional revenue. So.
Okay, and so you think that's a, a charge that we should give our staff? Or is that a charge we should give to the Parks and Rec advisory committee?
The, the question is, do we want to be? Do we want to be in the uh, programs and services business? We do, then we hire someone and we, over time, we absorb all the leagues under the district and we have someone running them. We don't want to do that. Then we continue to do what we do. We, we lease the field space and we let the leagues run leagues and then we set the cost of the fields and then.
Let them decide. The reason why I'm asking is because at the last Parks and Rec meeting, they had a discussion about sponsorships. And somebody was saying, well, you know, I believe that you should go for the big dollars. So you have a complex over here with five fields. You could name one, the Adidas field and ask Adidas to contribute, you know, twenty thousand or something like that. For the next two, three years.
The problem you're running with sponsorships is you're, you're competing against yourself. Cause the leagues all look for sponsorship dollars. I'm not saying it's not possible, but people always, their first response is, well, why don't we just get. You know, commercial and sponsored dollars. What happens is you're competing against the leagues. The leagues are doing the exact same thing. And if I am, and you're not going to get Adidas or any of the big teams, you're going to get Joe's Plumbing or maybe, you know, even Gardner was here for years and I worked for them. They would never sponsor, sponsor local. So anyway, so you're. Given the, the choice of sponsoring, putting up a banner up from the district. Versus paying for a team that your kid plays on, you're going to pay for that. And the only way we can get around that is to tell the leagues they cannot, they don't, they don't, we don't allow sponsorship because we're going to get it on our side. So anyway. But the, the big thing is I think there's still some revenue out there. It's going to come from two areas. One, you, you increase fees. Or you increase your circumstances. Uh, and you know, the fields can support, I think, some additional usage, but. Maybe not. We have to get creative with it. And that's just my, this is my opinion.
Well, maybe that's something we could discuss um, um, at our goal planning thing. What are our, what are our expectations for these assets?
I think that's for staff. I mean, I think we hire, we get some, we have, we hire someone that's going to be focused on that and it's part of staff's responsibility. To drive revenue or to optimize spend. We set policy in direction. It's really not our job to figure out how we, how we drive more revenue. I mean, in my opinion, I think that's, that's a staff responsibility. We need to tell, direct staff, we need to become more, either more profitable or we need to become more efficient. And in our facilities and, and how we run, run the parks. And it's their job to do that.
Okay, my next question, uh, still staying on the general fund. Uh, the third, uh, one, two, three, three pages after this one. Just before you get to public works. Three, three line, the third line item from the, from the, um, the end of, of the general fund. It says. Bachi ball, park upgrades. Do we have a bachi ball?
Yep, it's over here across the street. Behind the, it's over here, uh, behind the concession stand.
Right against the lake.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Do people use it?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's usually in the morning.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't even know we had that. Okay, uh, then um. And then stay in the general fund, then after public works comes the swimming pool. And all the uh, items under the swimming pool there are all the ideas that came from that pool group. That two hundred some odd people that put together a whole presentation, a whole packet for Chelsea. Are all of their ideas in here or just some of them?
They're in the CIP.
So they wouldn't show here on your operating.
Those are capital.
Those are capital improvements.
Capital improvement.
So this is just operating.
This is just operating.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it says, uh, from Prac, from Prac, from Prac.
Okay.
Provided by Prac, provided by Prac. Page forty-eight, forty-nine, I'm sorry.
Okay, and then um, under the Pelican Preserve Fund, which is. About four pages after that, the very end, the very last page, it's my page seventeen. I don't know what page.
Sixteen is mine.
Fifteen on mine, yeah.
So the other fees and charges are before that? Okay.
The O and, oh, the HOA agreement. I would like to suggest that we take the thirty-five thousand in irrigation. Make it that a, that a separate line item under um, landscape. And reduce and completely eliminate the uh, ninety-three thousand. From KW. Um, based on the um. The incidences and things that were discussed earlier in the meeting. And the fact that everything else has now come under, again, back under the GSCDD umbrella. We're paying all the bills, we're getting the, the people. The management company has virtually nothing to do except this irrigation, little irrigation thing. And I think that Landscape could very easily handle that. That we then um, eliminate that ninety-three thousand. And that would also reduce the amount of this budget by ninety-three thousand.
So there, there would be no property management firm?
Correct.
Cause in a. If you recall, there's in the staffing proposal, there is um, for someone, a full-time person to be, to be at Pelican. So that would be like our, our kind of like boots on the ground.
And that's already in this budget.
Over the last three years, the amount of funds that the HOA has been, Pelican HOA has been dispersing. On behalf of district assets. Went from one point five million.
To a little over four hundred thousand.
Now it's, next year it'll be less than thirty-five, which is what, you know, so I completely support that.
When I started in, with the twenty twenty-one budget, it was like one point five million. We cut that in half for fiscal twenty-two, down to seven hundred and seventeen thousand. This year it's four hundred and sixteen thousand and you're looking at basically thirty-five thousand dollars of reimbursable expenses for next year.
And the way it was cut was the funds were alloc, excuse me, Chelsea, the funds were allocated from, from uh, Castle Management or KW, whatever it may be. To the subcommittees. The first year we moved to um, landscaping and safety. Ponds was always.
Ponds went first and then we did landscaping this year.
Was never part of, never part of.
No, ponds was here and then we moved landscaping.
We moved it from that. Ponds was never there. So the first year we moved landscaping responsibilities and the contract for Wiser. So that's what took it from one point five billion down to whatever, nine hundred thousand. And now this year, as effect of October first, all of the other components that were remaining in the HOA agreement. Other than irrigation are already slated to move. They are going to move.
Right, in this, what's being proposed here, they are.
This is now what Carol is suggesting, we drop out, for high water, this was still appropriate to have it here. But let's just take the rest of this out. And then we will pay through the landscaping group those irrigation. And I will support that, but I think we needed to run it by PPAC.
Yeah, I'll bring it, they will have questions on budget at their meeting.
Go ahead, Carol.
Thank you. So I want to be clear, is it the expectation, Carol, that. Um, we cancel the O and M agreement with PPCA?
Yes.
And that would be effective October first at the start of the fiscal year?
Yes.
So we would, we would need direction from the board?
I think we will have to sit down and talk with them about things that are of mutual concern. And I would suggest we just take a clean sheet of white paper. And start with the things that we still need to talk about.
Sure, and I can tell you.
Because this, like this irrigation, this would probably be a reimbursement, money that we would pay to somebody. For the irrigation system. We are not taking the irrigation system under the GSCDD umbrella because we don't own it. It's not one of our assets.
But we do own parts.
Parts of it.
But we do own parts of it.
It's a Medusa, it's a bowl of spaghetti.
So we should pay for our part.
Absolutely.
And there'll have to be an agreement to that effect. And there might be some other things also.
Right.
That between the two that you need to work out. But I think the O and M agreement, the way it is right now. Um, uh, reflects a lot of old feuds. Uh, in the Pelican Preserve community. Um, things have changed over the time. There's been two or three amendments to it. And I think it's just time to start over fresh. And I think it's just time to start over fresh.
Yeah.
Okay, so we.
Have proved capable of accepting this responsibility, along with district staff support.
Okay, so they just need to talk to the P-PAC and then we'll cut it.
Well, let me, let me be clear. The agreement with the community association is at the board's level. Now you can take a recommendation from P-PAC, but ultimately the board has the final decision on that agreement.
And P-PAC has a meeting next week.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday. So that's why I'm bringing it up now.
And that, that the topic of the O and M agreement is actually on their agenda for next time, as well as the budget.
And so we'll be appropriate to advance that thought to them.
Right.
Hear what they have to say about it and then of course they will ultimate, as Chelsea said, we are discussing.
Okay. Anything else, Carol?
I did not have anything else.
See, I had two things on the same topic and I'm on page 15. There's, uh, $140,000 under Waterway Management Services where it says Conservation and Wetlands. And there's $30,000 per year to paint the boardwalk. And I plan on also taking this up to P-PAC next week because I think that can now be handled by our maintenance person. And this is the painting of the bridges if needed or ceiling.
I, I think part of the intention of that though is to make sure that we have money set aside to cover, even if staff were to do it or maintenance, you still have to buy the paint and everything too.
Well, it's not 30,000.
I understand that, but I mean that we don't want to remove it completely.
Ain't that expensive? Okay, and then.
It's a big boardwalk.
And then, uh.
Well, well, hold on because so Bob, your point is.
Bridges.
No, this is boardwalk, it's 30,000 to paint the boardwalk.
We just replaced it, we will be painting it for years. The boardwalk.
Okay, so maybe in the interim, Bob, we can get clarification from KW on exactly what their, what their intent.
Yeah.
Well.
Okay, let's see, finish her thought.
Yeah.
Thank you. So maybe we can follow up and get and find out what their intention was. And then we can again solicit quotes and go, you know, call Sherwin-Williams and find out how much a five gallon bucket of paint is. And get a better estimate for that number.
The reason the pods put it in here is they got it from KW.
Okay, the paint that you wanted is, is not entire boardwalk, just the bridges?
Abs, this is, this was focused only on the bridges.
So Chelsea, when we go out, it's not for the whole thing?
Okay.
Okay, and then on the very last page, and again, this is something I'm going to be recommending at the P-PAC meeting. But the $40,000 under other fees and charges, it says reserve emergency. While it's probably appropriate in terms of when a hurricane hits, I don't think it ought to be a budgeted number. I mean, we had one in Irma.
I need to clarify, it's not necessarily for a hurricane, it could be anything.
I know, I know, I understand that. But I've been on P-PAC for 17 years and we didn't have any other emergencies. So I don't think there's a need to put the 40 grand in here and we reduce our, that's a, that's one person's opinion and I'm going to roll it out to them. It left, we left it in here because we didn't want to have the big discussion. But it is appropriate next week as we're trying to reduce this thing. And then if you look up at the 128,000, which we already covered, you know, two lines above, Carol already covered that. So I don't think it's in here twice, but.
And, and, um, based on their past performance, they have actually more reserve funds than the CDD does. So I think they could very easily take that 40,000 out of their reserve funds if they have to. Or whatever the cost of it was.
But Laura, to you, what is the difference between under the other fees on page 18, that 128,000? And the 133 that's on page 17?
I don't, I'm on 16. Are you talking about Pelican?
Only Pelican, what's the difference between this one?
That's Stony Brook.
Oh, this is the HO, wait, special assessment.
Where you see 133?
Yeah.
I don't see no 133.
It is on, uh, the page 13.
Oh, 13.
Oh, 13.
Under revenue. It says Special Assessment Levy HOA Agreement, that's the 133. And then I go back to the very last page.
This was calculated by Stephen, I would have to ask him where that came, how that calculated. I don't, we don't plug these in. No, I think that, um, yeah, because it's more, so that's interesting. I think it's the 128,000 plus the 4% that we would lose and that.
Stephen's on the call, why don't we ask him?
Yep, Stephen, where did, can you see on the screen here, this 133, 33, 33? Could, because the amount for the HOA line is only 128,000 dollars, does that add a percent?
Yep, it's got to be grossed up for the 4% potential early payment discounts.
So it's not a double, not a double hit?
No.
No.
He just broke the lines out on here, like the same with the reserves, this, you know, matches up.
Thank you.
You got nothing for O1 to cut?
That's all I got for the budget.
Nothing for us?
Okay.
Well, I have one more.
Yes, Carol.
On Stony Brook, the O04. Do we have any kind of agreements yet with Stony Brook or is anything happening?
No.
That we need to change this?
We do not.
No, and I have it on my notes to follow up with Tony at the end, but as of 25 minutes ago, I checked my email, nothing.
Okay. So that will just have to wait till August discussion.
Going to stay there into, I mean, they know.
Stays still exchanged.
Yeah, okay. All right, that was it.
Nothing.
Doug?
Nope.
Okay, with that, we've got some homework to do on a couple of those line items. And if you guys have any questions in the interim, you can always reach out to Laura. Um, if you have any follow-up or want to know any details of specific line items, but we will do our homework and get back to you.
Chelsea, are, is this whole version fiscal year 2024, version two, June 15th, is it on our website?
Yes.
It is on the website in its entirety?
Yes, there, well, there's a link to it, yeah, on our website.
What?
It was published the day after last meeting.
What's the catalyst for version three or is that just our next meeting or nothing?
Well, I think we're just going to be holding on the three items from you, the two items from you. The three items from, from Carol and then three other items from O1, which is the Parks and Recs, which Chelsea's going to follow up with the Parks and Recs. So we just pretty much just put notes on it, but I don't think we, we documented anything today.
Correct.
Cause we're pushing against August and I just.
We have, we have, we have questions, we still have three, two, one, two, two more meetings, plus you can still make changes at the 17th before you actually vote it in. So we have three more meetings yet to have discussion.
But I strongly encourage if you have a specific line item you'd like for staff to do some due diligence on, please let us know sooner than later. Cause we don't want to be scrambling.
Yes.
I mean, there was, I, there was something on the O1, but it's, it's significant. It was under Water Management Services, I believe. It was that boat, I don't know if it was in the capital.
Oh, it's, it's on the capital.
Yeah, so to me, we had one. We just literally got rid of it, uh, about eight and a half ago.
Uh, not even, it was probably within the last six months.
Good condition, it was just not used because there was no need for it. So for me, I know it's 5,000, but I would, that, that to me, I, I see no need whatsoever to do that. That's the vendor's responsibility and it's what, what is our staff going to be doing out there?
Fishing, fishing.
Fishing, yeah, how about that?
Fishing.
Wildlife quality studies.
So for me, fishing, if you want to cut one item, I would cut that.
All right.
Nothing else?
Nope.
All right.
Public viewing?
Uh, there isn't.
Nothing, district manager items.
Anything, Chelsea?
She's on vacation, give her.
She is on vacation, I don't have anything else to add besides what we've already discussed, I included my, my big item.
For the budget?
Uh, no, they were under district manager items.
Regular agenda.
There's nothing on the agenda.
Nope, um, just, I want to, um, compliment all of the staff and, um, everybody who showed up for the 4th of July. We look forward to continuing to make these events better and better, um, over time and, uh, thank you all for your support.
Thank you. District Attorney?
Just a few items is, is Flavia mentioned.
Tony, talk into your mic.
Okay, I am now. As we mentioned, Stony Brook, we've heard nothing more with regards to any comments. We asked them to provide comments to the agreement that I provided and we have not received any. They prepared another agreement back and I just need to nudge them again. I think, uh, Flavia and or Chelsea nudged them and we've heard nothing more. So we just need to keep nudging them to get them to.
They need a new nudger?
I mean, I mean, to me, it's like, are we going to keep nudging them every week? I mean, they know, they know what the expectations are, their attorneys involved. It's, if this is, if they want a reduction and they want to make changes, it's on them to come to us. I mean, we have a, we have a pile of other things that we need to keep track on. And I think on this particular item, they will hear every meeting and I want to listen and I want to be fair, but it's on them. I mean, that's just how I feel.
I'll try one more time, I'll just send another.
Balls in their park.
Okay.
Anything?
And to be clear on that, if we don't hear, it just goes forward as proposed?
Yes, that's, that's.
That's fair enough.
That's how I'm looking at it.
And you know, I think you've all heard before, Pam, about the legislature passing the new regulations on golf carts, the driving requirements. It doesn't affect Pelican Reserve because there's that separate statute that talks about golf course cart usage in self-contained retirement communities. So that's a separate statute that says, notwithstanding the other statute, you know, unless a county or city has a regulation against it, you can't use it. Except you can't bring it over here. That's true, but I'm trying to make sure that from the Pelican Reserve perspective, I know that question came up in the past with regards to. And again, working with Chelsea and Lauren on a number of items, Hampton Park and also the FGUA Interconnect Agreement. And, and Chelsea, is she off net or not?
No, she's still there.
Uh, on the issue with the, making the amendments to Lee County and our local agreements, uh, we're pausing that until we get some, I guess, clarity, Chelsea, on the issue involving FGUA also and some other points. Tony may want to change also.
It, the only, the only outstanding thing, again, trying to kill two birds with one stone, is we have that third interconnect that, um, needs to be tied in for the Daniels Parkway Apartments. And we wanted to incorporate that language in this amendment, so we're not doing multiple amendments within one year.
Yeah, because part of the Daniels Parkway Amendment and the staff review of the proposals, they wanted to tap the Mid Hawthorne, uh, for water irrigation. And we said, that's not acceptable. And so that's, I'm not sure what the status of those planned reviews are, but we, staff has been pretty firm about that, following the board direction.
We anticipate them to request to come in front of you at a future meeting. We don't know how soon, but we've already conveyed to them that the permit criteria stands. Uh, but that in any way, they have, you know, the opportunity to come in front of you all and plead their case, so.
And so.
But, and, and I was still working with the county on the road turnover letter information. Or that's you that's working with a draft to send it to them to see if it's appropriate?
I, I have a draft of, of some documents and I was going to work with the Stony Brook attorney on that and Stony Brook Association. And I can still do that. I have, I have some draft form, I've looked at other org, other counties and municipalities where this kind of conveyance occurred. And so it modeled the consent. I might just send it to the county attorney's office.
Because I don't think that, uh, uh, Chelsea, correct me, but I don't remember that being part of something that Tony was going to work with Darren. I thought the only thing that Tony was going to work with Darren was the landscaping revision. I just don't want to delay, I know there are four different things going on over there. So if they're delaying on the two items that we asked for feedback, I don't want to delay on something that we didn't even ask them.
Fair enough, I will get, uh, a form out to the county attorney's office next week, I have it pretty much drafted.
Anybody else has any questions?
Yeah, before we leave, Mr. Tony, my favorite is the easement, uh, waivers or license agreements or whatever. We are working on three particular areas, I don't know if we've heard back from the attorneys yet for Avila, does anybody know?
Uh, yes, Avila's attorney was in court before the 4th of July and they had not gotten to it yet.
Okay.
So it's sitting on somebody's desk.
Okay, I had the first dialogue with golf course management, which was well received. But we're going to need the specific three easements that we need for them. So I'm hoping the attorney can provide that in the next week or so.
Yeah, what I can do is I can use, utilize the one we did for Avila, only simplify it because there, there are certain author, authority affirmations that were in that. One, because it's kind of association, may not be necessary.
Well, we're getting real close to having this thing done, I'm just trying to push it across the goal line. And the last one, of course.
Bob, Passarello is working on those exhibits and then once he gets those to us, then I can work with Tony on getting the forms ready, um, to send over to the golf course.
Oh, I, I, that's exactly what I was trying to get to. Had we given direction to Passarello to tell him what it should look like?
Yep, they've been going back and forth, I've been involved in the.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the last one, of course, is PPCA. And I know that there are already staffs working on that one, so that's great. The last thing, of course, is Conservation Area 6, I love to talk about that.
Yes, I will give you a memo about the cart path and all that's within it. And that's where the district got that as part of the requisition. In fact, one of the first requisitions that came out. So I will do a memo confirming that.
But is there a document I can have in my hand that shows that?
Yes.
Great.
It's got drawings.
This weekend?
Yes, well, no, Monday probably, only because tomorrow I'm playing, we have a budgetary notice disaster for another client.
Probably golf outing, but okay.
Pardon?
Never mind.
No, they don't let me, no, Bob, you understand, they don't let me on golf courses when I do, I need Army Corps dredge and fill permit.
Okay.
For all the divots, all the lakes and ponds I go into.
Thank you, that's all I've got, oh, not for you, I got, that's supervisor comments, okay, that's it.
All right. Uh, Chelsea, I actually do have one thing. Have you reached out to Eagle Point regarding that easement or if there's a need to, to work with Tony, the plantings?
I, I talked to Tony, well, this kind of goes hand in hand with the Timber Ridge. Um, I did talk to Tony about how we solidify that in writing. Um, and we're, we're going to work through that together. Cause it's technically not our right of way, the only reason we have any say in it is because of the, in our local agreement with the county. So, um, we'll, we're going to work to figure that out. But I have not reached out to Eagle Point directly.
Okay.
What do we, supervisor comments? Uh, again, future board business first.
Anything that you would like to add, anything in this future?
Well, I, I see we have the Avila Landscape Maintenance, it's been on here for 7/20. And I guess if we could, let's put a target date in the future for the other two components, which we, golf course with PPCA.
We can add those to the list.
Done, it's done.
Yep.
Anything else?
Bill?
Ready for supervisor comments or are we?
Yes. Carol? Uh, yeah, um, I was wondering how you guys like, I noticed when I was coming from 82 and turned on Gateway Boulevard that there are new plantings out there in the, um, in the middle area in front of, um, Stony Brook and then down further too. I was wondering how you guys liked. I mean, they look very nice to me, but I was kind of wondering.
Is it improving?
The section that had some mulch in it that looked more complete, looked nice, the rest of it looks incomplete. But we got an email blast out telling us that there's going to be concrete worked on tomorrow, so don't go that way.
Oh, okay.
So I follow up with the.
Still, still under construction, give them a chance to finish and then we'll tell you to take a look at the final product.
Okay, well, I, I went down that way the other day and I thought, oh, this looks kind of nice, looks, looks different, looks nice.
I still think it's 100% improvement.
Oh, yeah, it is. My, my only feedback on that, and I did send an email to Andrew today, it was yesterday, I think, is, I understand it's a construction area, but items that are under a contract, like weed control, they still need to be done. I mean, that was pretty bad in the area, so I understand it's a construction and we're upgrading and doing a beautification project, but there are things under the contract they still need to follow through.
We have our new landscape guy starting Monday, so I can stick him on that.
I think there was feedback regarding one of the plants to remove it that didn't really quite match. We could relocate them, uh, the one.
Purple.
Black magic, I think, yeah.
They just kind of stood out, it doesn't really fit into the, to the design.
That's easy, there are four. One is, one is everything is done, then we can make the decision, I guess.
Magically, one night, they'll disappear.
Yeah, they are called.
That actually happened, yeah, I mean, our landscaping stuff disappears.
Okay, go on. Yes.
Anything else?
Or the rabbits, the rabbits got them.
Anything else?
No.
No, nothing for me.
All right.
Uh, yeah, a couple of things. Uh, the, uh, 4th of July celebration went real, real well, staff did a great job, uh, and all the people, uh, planning it, Tony, and thank you for your contribution. A lot of smiling faces when they walked off with a couple of those gifts. Thought it went real well. I did see one thing though, that, uh, probably should have been more aware of, of the, some of the conditions down there. Uh, I want to make sure we get those restrooms, uh, taken care of, that, that's embarrassing. They, it, it looked like a half. They, it looked like a half-assed job. We did the floor, the walls come down, it doesn't look good. So we need to get somebody down there that knows how to spruce that up and get that taken care of, and whatever that is in the budget, you won't have a complaint from me on that. Lou DiAgostino, Chelsea, any word from him, where he's at?
We signed something the other day to have, to allow him to be able to discuss with, oh, I want to draw a blank. What's his name? Who lives in your neighborhood, Rod, thank you, gee. Um, and I haven't had a chance to touch base with him since I left, and since we signed, we had, we had, we had to do a wire transfer, or Laura wrote a check, and we had to send that, so I'm assuming he was waiting on that retainer to hit his bank account before he called me.
Okay, well, Rod's out of town, fees up in Canada, so you'll be back for another couple of days, I don't think.
But it's in process.
Yes.
In motion.
The next one I got is, I think all of the board members received, or looked like, were CC'd on an email. I've got from two owners over there in Pelican at C five.
C five.
What a disaster. I have never seen anything done like that, I talked to Lennar, oh, you're going to see more of this. If you're not aware of it, what's going on is the, the people were calling me complaining about broken pipes, not getting amenities, all of this type of stuff. I said, what are you, well, I'm, I'm a tenant. I said, well, why don't you talk to my owner, they won't do anything. Come to find out, Lennar built that and sold that entire hundred and, I think, sixty units to one owner. So they got a hundred and sixty tenants, they had no rights whatsoever. They went and took out during construction, and I don't know what the, how this gets into marketing, maybe we have to watch a little bit closer on these guys. But they had a, 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 a community center, a swimming pool complex, they were selling on that. They turned it into a building, they have no room for any facilities. These people are saying, where's, where's, where's my pool, where's my community center?
These are renters?
Renters.
They're renters.
These renters, their rights in that place are a joke. But what surprised me is when I talked to Lennar, I said, you've got a bunch of pissed off people over there, that are calling me, well, I can't do a thing about it. My first sale deal was, is go to the HOA, well, we did go to the HOA, the HOA is.
Me, myself, and I.
Me, myself, and I is correct. This is a disaster, and Lennar says, we're doing this a lot of places now. We come in, we build it, sell it to one deal, and so what is typically a condominium-type complex turns into an apartment complex. We got to watch for that stuff.
But can we stop it?
Because we can't.
No, the difficulty is, on one ninety, we do not have any permitting, zoning, or land use authority. We have the ability to regulate and permit as far as connection to district facilities, that's hence our permit criteria manual for the water, sewer, stormwater.
Well, when they come in with assets like pools and some of these other amenities, maybe what we do is try to do something to hold their feet to the fire that, hey, you build what you say you're going to build.
Or one other aspect is, is working with the local government, so that, that's in the city of Fort Myers boundaries, I believe. So that, the city must have allowed a change to their site plan or site development plan.
Also.
Didn't, didn't tell me about it.
Uh, so I, I, Flavia had forwarded, I think the lady's name was Haley, her, her information over to me, and I guided her, you know, if it's within the city limits, contact code enforcement, contact community development. Uh, but ultimately, that is, that is a civil issue amongst the tenant and their landlord or property owner. Um, and, and because we don't have a dog in the fight there, that's, like Tony said, we, we don't really have any leverage.
My first shock was the gal that called, I thought it was a cousin or a daughter or something of Carol's, but the names felt different.
Yeah, I mean, the, the concepts in rental housing are unique. There's another project in the north end of the Forum, that's in the city, called Odyssey by Solera, Solterra. And they're individual units, and there's no grass on their units, it was all like artificial grass, and then some vegetative. And those are owned by one entity, and those are all leased out also. But they do have an amenity feature there, but that, again, the, the district has no zoning, land use permitting authority, except as to the district infrastructure.
And then the last one is.
The individual owns all the common areas as well?
Real, real quick, if you guys get those, feel free to pass those off to me, and I can point them in the right direction for what entity that they should be reaching out to.
The last one is, FPL showed up Monday morning over at the golf maintenance building, opened up the transformer, took about three hours, and Bentley got the work done, and the lights are back on. I don't know what, we had FPL in Gateway Greens today, open, simple task of opening transponders so we could reconnect the wires for eight streetlights. It's a joke, nine months we've been waiting. It's all we needed, yep, all because they, they're too busy to come out and open a box, and they won't let the other vendors open their transformers. Won't let them open them. Pain, that's all I had.
So, Bob?
Uh, two quick things, I did get some positive feedback from the president's meeting in Pelican, which kind of surprised me, but better than sticking the eye. And I'm on the ticket to talk about the aeration and permit criteria, I'm working through that right now with the pods work group. There's some discussion within that about changing the spacing on diffusers, but I hope I'll be ready to do this in the next meeting.
Well, then that's all, nothing else, Laura, you have nothing, right?
No, I'm good.
All right, so move to adjourn.
Laura.
Have a good day.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Enjoy your vacation.
Thank you. Bye.